Those are never good.
I was just thinking that.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, August 18th. This is seven o'clock. Calling this meeting to order, let's go ahead and stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Elias, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Hatfield?
Here.
Councilmember Benish?
Here.
Councilmember Shovlin?
Here.
Councilmember Grau?
Here.
Mayor Hubbard?
Here. All right, that moves us along to the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield and a second from Councilmember Grau. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, agenda is adopted. Let's move along to visitor presentations. Looks like we have a few here. So, we're going to start it off with the GTO program recap with Aiden and Griffin. I don't know who's coming forward, but it looks like Chaska's finest is stepping up to the plate.
I am.
Hello, Officer Martin.
You guys go.
They're going to come up and our wonderful cadets.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Officer Martin Godinez. I work for the Chaska Police Department. We are here for our GTO graduation. I did write a little something. So, within the last eight weeks, our cadets, Aiden and Griffin, have learned so much about our city and what each employee does to make it safe, fun, livable, and why the city of Chaska is the best small town in Minnesota. That one's for you, Matt.
Oh, thanks.
They started their journey by meeting me for the first time at Stryker's to get fitted for their uniforms. I will never forget when Aiden came out of the dressing room and saw himself in the mirror. I said, "Oh, boy," as he began twerking in uniform. Myself, okay, this is going to be interesting but fun, right? A few months later, both Aiden and Griffin were sworn in by Mayor Hubbard and Chief Cybert. The following eight weeks, they visited with city admin, finance team, Chaskapiti, Chaska Town Course, where they met Handsome John. I did not name him, they did.
I'm sure he'd love that.
Chaska FD, Communications, Water and Sewer, Chaska Community Center, Parks and Rec, Electric Department, and Public Works, many divisions last week. Although Griffin seemed more reserved when I first met him, Kevin Wright learned that Griffin too likes to jam out specifically to country music by fist pumping at its full volume.
Right.
Or as Kevin said, "I don't think my volume has ever been that loud in my car." You want to play the? We'll play a video recap of what we've done.
It doesn't take much to.
Let's check out the Merck's status log.
This must have been your administration day.
Do they feel like it?
Oh, the fire department.
Oh.
Another fan favorite.
There you go.
Nope.
Oh, you guys got to fly the drone.
That says police rules on the fire chief's office.
Nate looks very enthusiastic there.
Mayor, you've got that.
I have done that. That's hard work.
Oh, look at me.
But I have not driven a Zamboni. Congrats, guys.
Oh, nice.
Hey, we have alumni.
Oh, hard hat stickers. Look at you. Town course. Handsome John.
Yep.
Lions park.
You're the best guy to fly up to that replay up here.
Oh, yeah. We had our interviews.
Oh, bucket.
Oh, wow.
Were you guys scared? I was pretty high up.
Get the power back out of the house. I think I climbed the highest.
Oh, did you? Good job. Tom Petty.
Oh, nice.
Oh, whoa, look at you, greenskeeper.
That's awesome.
Oh. Oh, that's.
So cute.
It's great.
That's it? Perfect. So, fortunately, Chief Cybert couldn't be here tonight, but this is the part where Chief would ask each one of you a question. He would ask, "Which department was the best one you've visited?" Fire?
Yes.
Nice.
Police.
Police.
He liked that answer.
I just want to say to both of you that we all enjoyed having you be a part of our city for the last eight weeks. We hope you enjoyed it too. And I would like to give each one of you our newest challenge coin. It's important to remember that receiving a police challenge coin is a gesture of honor and respect, signifying recognition for one's actions, and highlighting the importance of the law enforcement community. Thank you to all our wonderful departments within the city of Chaska that have always welcomed our cadets and showed them so many things. Thank you to Alex from Empower Inclusion for helping put this program together, and obviously to Aiden and Griffin's family in the city of Chaska. Thank you, everybody.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, you got. Now's the time.
Bucket ride.
Bucket ride. Yeah.
Did you go pretty high on the second there, right?
Electric work.
Electrical work.
Okay.
Driving around passing ice cream.
Too many breaks.
Friday drive around. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love police, I love city, I love police, I love that, and then I be, I please myself.
All right. Okay, yeah. Very cool.
And, and, and for your question that, and then, and I love, and I love that, and then eating that, and I love, I love that, and because, and I love city, and I like a city, and country, and a whole lot, and country, and love that, and I'll make and do that.
Oh.
That. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do we get to find out why it's Handsome John?
Would you like to explain?
Who?
Why John Schmidt is Handsome John?
Oh, yes.
Because I love him.
How much did he pay you for that comment?
Kevin, we're all the best dude ever. I love you and miss you.
Oh.
Love you guys too.
Oh.
So cute.
Well, it's been so fun to watch you guys through social media and to see your slideshow and to see all the fun and interactive things that you were able to do. You guys were both able to grow and be able to see skills and develop and kind of, it sounds like, hone in on what you like, being fire and police. And so, it's just been a wonderful journey walking with you guys. Thank you so much for being a part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's do a picture. Maybe Aiden can do a selfie with all of us in the background.
Kara, I love you.
Scooch in.
It's like, come stand right here. Awesome. Oh, you guys come on back.
Come on back. He was trying to get one more.
You know, it's fun just getting a selfie from a signing. Get in here. There we go.
All right, one, two, three. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you guys did.
Thank you.
It was such a pleasure.
Good working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Love you.
Love you too.
This your hat?
Thank you.
I love you.
Sophia, I know you're coming tonight, so I love you. Sophia, Chaska, those are my friends. It's our big guys. I missed them so much that Best Buddies Leadership Conference is Indiana, and, yeah, and my friends are going to miss me a lot. And then, I'm going to Best Buddies Picknick to take you for coming. Kevin, Kara, Luke, Jess, and Kevin, and Ian Shepard, thank you all so much for coming, and I love you too.
All right. Thanks, Aiden. Thank you, guys, for coming out. All right. Well, guess what, Marshall, you got big shoes to fill. You're up next on this agenda, Southwest Park Master Plan Update. Take it away.
Might follow that. All right, let me go ahead and get my screen ready here.
What'd you say? Oh, yeah. It is kind of like, there you are, and then there you are.
All right, now that's all done.
It'd be fun if he was sitting right here, and then it'd be like that 3D mirror effect.
Okay, all right. We ready?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here before you again to talk about the Southwest Chaska Park Plan and give you kind of an update on where things are at. So, tonight, what I thought we would do is just go back and review a little bit of the process and what got us up to the point here tonight from the last time we met. We'll talk through the Phase Two Community Engagement results and then finish with next steps and questions. So, as you remember, back on May 8th, we conducted a Parkapalooza event over at the Chaska Community Center. That event was really in response to our Phase One Community Engagement and taking the, kind of the top themes we heard from that to start developing three different concept plans. And from there, we reviewed those plans. If you recall, we had a joint work session where we received some feedback from both the Council and the Park and Rec Commission. And then, from there, we went back and we developed these three concept plans that we were going to position then for our Phase Two Community Engagement to get feedback on them. One thing I would like to point out here and just kind of anchor us a little bit, when we developed these concept plans, we really were, at that point, still trying to be aspirational in the planning process. So, these plans really were meant to showcase the variety of things that could be incorporated throughout the park, how things could fit on the park, and then generally play off of the top three themes that the community had expressed sort of their desire for the park to be in the future, which were sport, nature, and play. We kind of knew all along going into this that, you know, in the very end, we're going to end up with a mix of those themes. This was just a way to sort of present it, and I would say maybe honor the original feedback we got and sort of show the community that we heard them. Also, when we went into this next round of engagement, we weren't really asking people to pick one of the themes. It was really trying to get feedback on all three of the themes. So, once we landed on those three concepts, we then worked quite a bit with consultants at Confluence to update our project website and get it prepared for community engagement. And so, we had each of the three concepts up on the site where people could go in, and there's some fun little toggle buttons that people could click on, and it would open a little bit more of a picture and an explanation of what's being shown in the concepts. And then below each of the concepts, we had a few open-ended questions where we were seeking feedback from people on. And then, we had sort of an overall concept survey for people to take as well. So, once the project website was up and ready, we then spent July 10th through August 6th really promoting those concepts and the project website to try to drive people to the site and give us their feedback. So, we were out at our two largest community events this summer at Fire and Ice and River City Days, where it was great just intercepting people. I was there at Fire and Ice, and I think we had people at that table pretty much consistently the whole afternoon. We followed up with all of the focus group individuals that we met with, sent them an email, gave them an update, and steered them towards the project website. We utilized social media to make people aware of it. We sent it several times through our email listservs that we have in our department, updated our website, got an article on the Carver County Online News. So, just a whole host of ways that we got the word out, encouraging people to check out the concepts and tell us what they think. So, with that, here's sort of a review of the survey results. We had about 3,500 unique visitors that went to the site. Some of them went there a couple of times, so there was over 4,500 visits total. And then, we had a little over 1,100 surveys that were completed, which represented about 600 unique sort of IP addresses. So, the visits to the website was pretty similar to what we saw in the Phase One Community Engagement. And then, the number of surveys submitted was a little bit less than Phase One, but I think that's to be expected. A lot of information was within these concepts, and it required a little bit more of a time commitment to provide that information. But overall, I still think it's a really good response to the survey and some information there for us to glean. All right, so what I'll do now is sort of step through a summary of the variety of questions that we asked. So, this first set of slides will be based on the open-ended questions that we asked for each concept, and Confluence used an AI tool to kind of go through all of the comments to bring in kind of a summary highlight for each of the questions. So, starting off with the sports-themed concept, the question was, "What stands out in this concept is positive and exciting for the community?" And you can see there that sports fields with strong interest in soccer, baseball, and softball fields stood out, trails in nature, so the walking and nature paths and open green spaces stood out, solar panels. We had had that on that concept as an idea for covered parking with solar on top, so I think some people commented on that. It was an interesting idea. Inclusive playgrounds, again, a strong emphasis on the accessibility and community-friendly design. The disc golf and ninja course within it, there's comments about that being unique and stood out. And then, community engagement, so the value placed on spaces that bring people together is what people liked on that concept. The next question was, "What do you think is missing and/or should be changed in this concept?" So, there's quite a few comments about there needing to be more soccer fields, especially all-weather turf fields, splash pads and water features, a desire for more interactive water elements. So, again, when we put together the concepts, we intentionally put some things in some concepts and some things not in others. Or, if you recall, the park shelter building had different size and scope. So, we were kind of looking to see whether or not that triggered some different comments. And so, I think in this sports concept, there wasn't much for a water feature. Parking and accessibility, some comments about concerns about whether or not there's enough parking and access. Disc golf debate, so there was some mixed opinions on the disc golf. Some wanted it and others didn't. Winter activities, requests for more ice rinks and year-round usability, and then restrooms and amenities. So, I think on this concept, the park shelter was a little more basic in nature, so they were commenting a need for better facilities like bathrooms. And then, the last question, "What else would you like to share about this concept?" So, a theme around community needs, so reinforcement of the need for sports infrastructure, especially soccer and baseball. Inclusive and accessible design, a continued emphasis on making the park usable for all. Parking and space planning, comments on the layout and capacity, sustainability and solar panels. So, here we saw some comments where some people supported it, but then others kind of came through with a little bit of skepticism about it. Disc golf and recreational variety, so a desire for diverse activities but with thoughtful placement. And then, city identity and pride came out, so feedback tied to Chaska's growth and community image. So, I recall some comments about just the excitement about this park and what it can mean for the community and attract people to want to live here. Moving on to the second concept, the nature-themed concept, the question, "What stands out in this is positive and exciting for the community?" Nature and trails, the nature play area, the treetop canopy walk, walking trails, forest, natural surfaces. Winter activities, this one had the ice skating loop and year-round amenities. Community and inclusivity, the inclusive playground, community garden, food forest.
Is a food forest like a community garden too, or is it something different?
It's a little bit different. It'd be more like, think like apple trees or things like that where people can come and pick things. Here we saw amenities, the restaurant or cafe along with the water misters and the dog park stood out as positive. And then overall sentiment, a unique concept, peaceful, accessible, and great for families. In response to what do you think is missing and/or should be changed, there was some comments about dog park concerns, just overuse, mess, and safety issues. I recall some comments too, just when you got the dog park and inviting more dogs, when you got the community garden and things like that, they might be attracted to those things. Garden and food forest skepticism, so some maintenance concerns, redundancy and underutilization. Requests for more splash pads, soccer fields, more trails, shaded areas, and parking. Some skepticism in suggestions, preferred ground-level trails over the treetop walk, replace the dog park with other features, add water play, and reduce sports elements. And then accessibility and safety, trail connectivity, lighting, and winter usability was commented on. And then what else would you like to share about this particular concept? There was some overall sentiment and feedback that this was their favorite concept, excitement and appreciation for nature focus. Nature and community, preserve the big woods, add educational elements, community engagement. Concerns and suggestions, again, the dog park theme, food forest maintenance, splash pad requests, trail connectivity. Amenities and usability, preferring the year-round bathrooms, shaded seating, a restaurant and cafe, and inclusive design. And then the multi-generational feedback came out. Interest in multi-generational appeal and accessibility for all ages with that nature concept. And then the last themed concept was play. So just going through these, what stands out as positive and exciting? The water features in this one, here's the concept where we had more of the robust splash pad shown. So that was very popular with over 67 mentions. Recreation and play, a strong interest in the pump track, amphitheater, adult swings in the playground. Nature and trails more frequently appreciated. And then community amenities, the park building and open lawn area were noted as attractive gathering spaces. What is missing or should change in this concept? Concerns about the skate park, often with some negative sentiment or requests to remove it. Pool requests, some respondents asked for a community pool instead of or in addition to the splash pad. Safety and accessibility, comments included concerns about lighting and bathroom facilities. And then balance of the features. Some felt the concept was too focused on niche activities and lacked broader appeal. And what else would you like to share about this concept? Again, on the skate park, some debate over the value and safety of the skate park. Community identity, several comments emphasized the need for a concept that reflects Chaska's identity and serves all age groups. I was a little baffled at that. I felt like the concepts did a pretty good job at that, but. Favorite concept, many respondents expressed that this one was their preferred concept, especially due to the splash pad and the amphitheater. And then inclusivity in nature, requests for more inclusive design, natural elements, and multi-generational appeal. So then moving on, as part of the overall survey, we had a whole list of sort of the possibility of amenities and we wanted to get people's thoughts and had them rank them on a scale from one, you know, not necessary, a three would be nice, and a five, we should definitely have in the final plan. And I'd point out that there's things that we sort of are assuming that are going to go in the park, such as the Miracle League Field, the Universal Design Playground, a park shelter building, trails, things like that. So those were not included in this list. It was sort of like giving us some direction outside of those things, what we would want to.
But it's interesting because you just mentioned on three slides, people wanted water play, but that's not even on this list.
That's on the next one. There was so many, it took two slides.
Okay.
So you can see here kind of where they all landed. And I got the slide in the end here that sort of situates them as a top 10. So here you can see the top 10 that came through. So nature play area scored the highest, followed by splash pad, open grass and lawn area, rectangular soccer fields. And then what we thought was interesting and came in fifth would be food for purchase options as something for us to think about. You know, whether that's setting it up for food trucks to hook up or an actual cafe, restaurant within the building, or concessions. So we've got to kind of think about that some more.
From a perspective of what we have right now, concessions are at Fireman's and then obviously Charlie's or whatever, it's not Charlie's anymore, Oak 19 at Town Course. Does one do better than the other?
They're sort of two different, I mean, one is set up more as a restaurant and one is set up more as just pure concessions. They both do very well. The Oak 19 is going to do more from a revenue perspective just because the food's more expensive. But I'd say as far as, you know, volume of stuff, I think both do very well.
So there's not a preference. Because I know at the San Ventures thing in Shakopee, the Tommy's is there, but then they still have the concessions outside the Tommy's for those that don't want to go in and dry off and sit down.
Okay.
You just can't, it's capturing the audience, right? If you're a family and you've got to leave for food, chances you're getting that family back there is down, right? Like if I can.
Oh yeah, no way. They're not coming back.
Like that's like you've got a captive audience and you keep them there longer because they don't have to leave.
Yeah, and that food truck idea is cool because it brings a variety of options.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting look at just how things ranked. You know, the way I sort of evaluate it is there's not a huge spread, you know, between the top and bottom. It's kind of a one-point difference.
Yeah.
And I think it sort of came through in the open-ended questions, the feedback I shared with you. I think in general, people are, they kind of like all three concepts in one way or another.
I mean, I heard that reflected a lot with, when I was at the booth in River City Days, that folks were really excited about just lots of different components on each of them. I also think too, it just shows our diverse community. We have a lot of people that interact with this survey probably from different age levels and interest levels. So I think that really is very reflective here.
Yeah.
I also think it's exciting because for a city our size, there's a lot of parks already. I mean, there are a lot of parks in this city. But the idea that people are so excited about another one means there's obviously an expressed interest in using it already. So that's kind of from a progressive standpoint really fun to see.
Yeah.
And Fireman's is always used. So if you can, if you think about just, and it's not that big, that park, this could be huge.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it jumps out to me. I like that nature play area because I think it's just such a unique space, especially on the south side of that, right? You know, I think the canopy idea is interesting. I was in Gatlinburg and did Anacysta canopies two weeks ago and that's a cool experience. Clearly different setting, big woods versus mountains, but same concept. I would, you know, be, I wouldn't have the respect of my fellow council members up here if I didn't point out that baseball and softball combined with rectangular fields for five is both high up there. And actually, you know, in all seriousness, had a good conversation with the chair of the Chaska Baseball Association this weekend because it was tryouts. And he called me out in front of all the parents as a council member, which I appreciate, it just made me feel cool. But it's just kind of just that idea. I mean, a good example, another just example of kind of like what happened in the city, right? It was beautiful Saturday afternoon, but the rain washed all the fields out, so tryouts happened at the high school inside, right? Versus if you had turf, it probably would have dried out and you could have done stuff like that. And that stuff just comes into play again. Was it the end of the world that we tried out in the gym? It wasn't. But there's a lot of excitement and as I said, so I was happy to see those two both high because again, I think I really liked that concept of that big space that's modular, that you can kind of do all of those things in that. That jumps out to me because it's just an inclusive space. You can use it for soccer, lacrosse, football, and baseball and softball. Versus a grass baseball field with dirt infield is a grass baseball field with dirt infield. Does not get used for other stuff. All right, there's my turf pitch, got it? Thanks.
All right, I'll keep going here. So the next question we had on the survey was, is there anything not on the above list that you feel should be definitely included? So water amenities, splash pad, wading pool, misters, and swimming areas came up. Some recreational items with adult swings, walking trails, playground, skating rink. So again, things we kind of assumed, but they weren't in that list that came out. Nature-focused elements, nature preserve concept, solar panel parking, an outdoor amphitheater, and then community-oriented spaces. Food trucks, rentable park structures, and picnic areas.
For food truck spaces, is that, I mean, obviously you'd have to have a space, a curb. Is it just power then, really?
And water.
And water?
Yeah.
Because I mean, that's a very interesting concept to just kind of create that because, I mean, you think about any events that could happen in those spaces where you just, food trucks would come in and it's not, we're not looking for that business, right? There, food trucks typically are looking for places to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you actually need water for those? Because I only ask because at St. Hubert's, they bring food trucks all the time and it's just in the parking lot. There's not water out there that I know of. There's electricity, but.
I think there's a preference for them to have all the utilities available.
You get more, it's easier to get.
Okay.
Yeah, them to come if there's.
The other thing that we're seeing in lots of cities in the Twin Cities here is, you know, restaurants that will actually set themselves up in city parks. And so, you know, there's all kinds of examples in Minneapolis parks, but Minneapolis is a highly dense area, so it's a little bit easier. But, you know, like Lakeville with, is it Marion Park? Lake Marion Park?
Lake Marion, yeah.
Yeah, so they have antlers, which actually they took shipping containers and made them into actual, just a small restaurant space that then basically had outdoor seating that was there. So it's not unheard of to see those in suburban communities too.
The other thing you see common is like the food hall concept, right? Right, so you have a shared seating space and then you have restaurants that can.
Very common on the West Coast.
Can all share that space, which provides shade, right? That's, that would be a positive of that, where it'd be an indoor structure versus I get my food from the food truck and I still got to go seek shade, right?
Yeah.
I also do always worry that food trucks won't always be a thing. Like 20 years from now, food trucks aren't a thing anymore. But you can dress that others. But that's my one thought about food trucks. Because 10 years ago, they weren't as prevalent as they are now. So is that a market that's going to ebb and flow? And where it makes more sense to just put something more permanent?
Definitely something to think about.
I'd like to see water is up at the top because truly, I love water, so I'm biased. But all the young families are looking for water. Their kids get hot, their kids are bored, and it's just, you know, you can play out in the backyard for only so long, then you got to go find water. So, and Clay Hole is a bit dirty for most of us, so.
Yeah, it was definitely a top theme for sure. We had asked a question in general, to what degree would you prefer the park to have more natural native areas compared to manicured programmable areas? And you can see it leaned a little bit more towards the native, natural areas. It's kind of an interesting thing to glean there.
Is it one to five, right?
Yeah, one to five, but it was kind of more like, which end would you slide it towards? More of, more natural or more manicured?
But is not the plan for a lot of the park to be natural? I mean, we're only developing a small of 55 acres. We probably must be developing 10%.
No, the area that would actually be graded is about 55 acres. The only area that wouldn't be graded would be the area that's in the woods. I mean, there's some areas along the woods edge probably that would be left a little bit less developed and stuff. But if you look at most of those plans, most of that area ends up getting graded.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, and this is really getting at, to what extent do you want, you know, more of that lawn that you're going to be mowing, you know, that's set up for programming or turf or playground infrastructure compared to more of that natural native area? So overall, the community is leaning a little more towards, keep it natural is what this is saying. We had asked if we were to incorporate a theme into the playground and park, what would be your idea? And you can see there is sort of nature environment again where some of the themes that stood out, local identity, inclusivity and creativity. And then there were some that just felt like neutral or no theme is needed. What considerations or features would make the park more accessible to you? So restrooms and parking, clean, well-lit, year-round restrooms and sufficient parking, inclusive design, universal playground, stroller-friendly paths, shaded areas and sensory play zones, mobility support, so accessible trails, ramps, and seating for older adults and people with disabilities, and family-friendly layouts, proximity of play areas for different age groups, safe crossings, and dog-friendly zones. So kind of cool to see that feedback because that, you know, that really is kind of the overall goal going into the plan of this park. And then we asked, is there anything else you would like to share that would be helpful to know as we take the next step to develop a preferred concept plan? So need for sports facilities, again, especially soccer with all-weather turf, natural preservation, desire to protect and integrate natural elements like the big woods, community amenities, interest in food options, shaded seating, and multi-use spaces. And then some concerns were expressed about the skepticism of skate parks, solar panel costs, and the need for more inclusive planning.
What does that mean? Did they like expand on more inclusive planning?
I'm not sure where that was coming from.
Okay, someone just was mad they weren't included.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's interesting. Because isn't this the part of being inclusive?
About as inclusive as you could get.
Right.
Are they meaning like disability though, like inclusive playgrounds?
Maybe, that could be.
Yeah, and I mean, at this concept level, you're not seeing the detail yet.
Yeah, you're not seeing where there'll be ramps and, you know, all of those inclusive pieces.
That's why I read that as more of ADA.
So just kind of show you where we're at in the overall project process. We're kind of sitting between that evaluate and refine. So really, the next steps are going to be to, it's kind of the next step's the hard step. We got to figure out how to take this feedback, you know, and all the cool stuff that's shown in those three different concepts onto one preferred concept plan.
So is that where you get together with Confluence and do? Or is that? So is that where you get together with Confluence and do, or is that you bring in?
Yep. I got kind of a, an overview of what I think our next steps are.
Okay.
Coming up. But before that too, also just point out that I shared this, we, we had this discussion with the Park and Rec Commission last week at their monthly meeting and had a good discussion. You know, around the themes that came through in the feedback and so you know, there's some direction there and notes that we took that will be, you know, factoring in into these next steps as well.
That's good.
Can I, I know this is going backwards that step, but the skepticism around skate parks, I saw it a couple of times and
Yeah.
I have no idea really what goes on in a skate park, but what's the concern?
Yeah.
I jokingly said like, man, all the years, skate parks can't, can't kick the stereotype.
Feel bad for the skater community. I was a skateboarder when I grew up.
But is it like something where the city would, you know, like if you put an in-ground pool in, because of the depth of the water, all of a sudden liability goes way up? And I understand that, so splash pads are better at skating.
It's more of a perception that people have, like we have a skate.
That they're loitering and all.
Yeah, we have a skate park.
That sort of stuff.
Yeah, we have a skate park over in Community Park.
Oh, so it's more a stereotype.
It's just a, yeah, it's just a generalized stereotype.
It just amazes me like that, like to your point, like cities and skate parks has been like this
A thing forever.
Thing forever. It's like, that community hasn't been able to kick the stereotype, which is just like, seems so unfair.
I blame Bart Simpson.
The funny thing is, I'm pretty sure the research will show there's more injuries in soccer and baseball than there are skateboarding.
When, I don't know if any of you have been to Round Lake in Eden Prairie, but it's right across the community center of high school. And they've got the beach, the splash pad, the skate park, the boat lot. There's always people at the splash pad, there's always people at the skate park. Those two are.
I think there'll be, I think there'll be people at the skate park. I just think that the people filling out this survey are probably not.
They're not the ones at the skate park.
They're not going to be the ones at the skate park.
No, I just wondered if one was, like, it was a huge cost to the city to have a skate park or, you know.
Well, and our Park and Rec Commissioner Terry Schwerm made a good comment in our discussion that a lot of times it's the location and where you put it too.
Yeah.
And you're actually better off putting it in an area where you know there's gonna be people more often than not. Rather than isolating it somewhere and there's really no oversight of the kids playing. So positioning it in a park like this and somewhat adjacent to the playground could be a nice feature and attract people.
Activities you maybe don't want down, yeah.
It's the design and style of it too, right? Marshall, kind of the, the approach that you take to the materials used to create the park generates the desirability. And then the more it gets used, the safer it is too, right? Because you've got more eyes on it.
And there was a, I forget what park it is now, so I can't, we're gonna have to go back and look, but they had a pump track around a skate park. So like the track was on the outside and the skate park was kind of in the middle. There was a little bridge that went over to it. But that's another way to keep loud things or things that you think away from the nature lovers if that was, you know, a concern too, but.
Yeah. Okay, so wrapping it up here, next steps, you know, I think city staff now will take it from here. Our, we have a project team. And we'll continue to work with conflict, Confluence to then develop a draft of what we think a preferred concept plan could be. And that draft will take into account the, the overall park goal of being a universally designed, where everybody belongs. It'll take into account the market and NRPA, National Recreation and Park Association Benchmark Analysis that we conducted. It'll take into account the community feedback from phases one and two engagements, along with the Park and Recreation Commission feedback. Needs to take into account the site conditions, you know. The reality is it's a hilly site and it's got awesome natural resource features with the Big Woods adjacent on the south end of it. We need to take into account the maintainability and the impact on the operating cost going forward. So there's some decisions in there that we would, that, that, that could affect that going forward. So we need to be mindful of that. And then obviously the construction cost is going to really come into play as we develop this preferred concept plan. So we'll be evaluating those cost estimates in more detail and figuring out how that plays a part in those other items that we need to take into account. And then we'll plan for a joint work session in October to bring the council and commission together so we can review that draft with you. Get some feedback and comments on that. And then the thought would be to bring a proposed preferred concept plan to the Park and Rec Commission in November for them to be able to give their recommendation to you for adoption.
Do we have like a, just a general budget that we're looking at right now? Because I know we have Parkland Dedication Dollars, your Rotary and Lions, maybe just Rotary, but they're doing fundraising efforts towards components of this.
Yeah, we, we've targeted between about 15 and 17 million dollars for it. So I mean, that, I do sense that that's going to be a big part of our analysis as we're going forward with this is how, how do we meet that budget as we're, as we're moving forward? Because I don't know, I've seen enough plans over the years to know that, you know, you generally get a sense of, of how much things might cost.
Yeah, because like when we did the master plan for the community center, they talked about, you know, the cost of something, but then the rate of return on it and, and things along those lines. I'm assuming it kind of gets maybe broken down. I know it's a little different. It's not an enterprise.
Because we don't, it's not.
Yeah, we're not paying entrance to get in or whatever, but.
But that's going to be part of the whole process is, is really sort of looking at, you know, what is our, you know, what is our budget? What's our available resources and how do we maximize what people are commenting on in that plan? So by far, it's always the toughest part of the whole process.
Yeah, especially if they evaluate to like, okay, we put this in, but what's our ongoing maintenance cost of this? What's going to be replacement cost of this? Turf. And I just felt good fun at. But yeah, just those sort of components, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, we, we definitely consider that, but, but no, there, you know, this is, you know, this is where we really start getting serious about what things are we actually going to include in this and do we think that that's meeting our expectations?
Okay.
I suspect like we do for a lot of things, we look for grants, we look for partnerships. You know, because I think like, you know, again, not to talk baseball fields, but that's on my mind these days because it's almost over season. But like Minnesota Twins, Saw Nation, Metro Baseball League, there's a lot, there's other way, like money, but soccer is the same way. And even I'm sure like nature spaces probably has grant dollars and stuff like, so all those things I think are, which we've always done a really good job as a city to find those opportunities. To, you know, maybe get an amenity that would be cost prohibitive, but adds that to it.
Does this qualify for, you know, many years ago, obviously a referendum to the voters of the state for the arts, does this fall within that purview?
Legacy dollars?
Yeah, the legacy dollars. Or is this kind of a?
Parts of it, we've already received legacy dollars for. So the Big Woods, the grants that we received for that were from the legacy dollars. So I think if you were to look at this park as a whole, the stuff that we do in the woods and stuff to preserve that and, you know, get people out in there, I think that stuff could potentially be legacy dollars. Because it has to be more regional in nature.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a really tough argument to make that like the regular park components would, would qualify for legacy dollars.
Sure.
I mean, the other thing, I mean, Councilman McGraw mentioned, you know, partnerships. It's not unusual for cities to partner up with associations and say, you know, maybe what we would have put into a regular field, we'll put that in, but maybe if there's a desire to see it bumped up to, to turf that, you know, a lot of times you'll see cities will actually go out and finance that and give associations multiple years to be able to, you know, come back. So I mean, and I don't know if those are options or not here, but I think those are the types of things that we'll probably be looking at.
Yeah, knowing, knowing the direction that we're beginning to head, just with the concepts alone, we started to sit down and look at grant opportunities and talk to Confluence around, you know, support they can provide. And maybe writing and submitting, helping us to submit some of those. So we've got sort of sketched out a calendar of deadlines for some of these opportunities and they relate to various things. You know, whether it be the park elements themselves or the, the stormwater infrastructure that's going to have to go in. There's a number of different opportunities from different angles. So we're trying to take a broad net to that.
Yeah, one, I was actually, the whole time Marshall was giving his presentation, I was looking at my spreadsheet that I put together like a year ago for this park and I had a note down on the bottom of it talking about how much of the, of the grading in this park is associated with stormwater. It's a lot. And so I do think that there's some opportunities, like Nate says, to look at how we can partner with agencies who look at trying to really upgrade wetland facilities around. Make them really high quality, you know, those types of things. So yeah, there's, there's multiple different aspects of this that we're going to be looking at.
Wouldn't the stormwater runoff create some sort of man-made lake though, that can then be built into the nature? I mean.
It wouldn't be, this would be more like this type of stormwater runoff that you'd see in a typical neighborhood. So it, it goes through treatment stages in it, probably never to a stage where you'd actually be able to use it for, for recreation.
Unless it froze.
Well, that freezes and you can skate on it. That makes the attorney nervous.
Then I won't bring up my pool thing, but I'm actually not bringing up the pool. It's more like any water features or maybe skate parks. I'm not entirely sure. Pump tracks, but is there anything where you could minimize the cost by charging a very nominal amount to use? You know, like if you think about community, communities who have outdoor pools, they charge to get in. It's not just a, well, so does the community center for the indoor pool, I guess. But you know, there's certain things, a splash pad probably not, but if you went to the point of waiting pools or you put in skate parks that were state of the art or things like that, you could maybe offset the cost a little bit.
I think the only way you could do that is if you actually had an amenity like a pool. Because if you look at, like Minneapolis has waiting pools.
Yeah, they do.
And they're all free. The, and I know this was a big discussion that came up within the Park Board when they were talking about this. Is how do we make this park as accessible to everybody as possible? And not just people who maybe live close to it. There, there was a big discussion about the splash pad and should the splash pad be here? Because it's maybe not central enough to, and if you're going to do a splash pad, should you do it somewhere else in the community? Not here. So that was the types of discussion.
It's not like we're a huge community.
No, but that's what, I'm just saying that's the types of discussions that the Park Board was having is how do you make this as accessible as possible to everybody?
I can see it. Fair.
Another question that I think I always know the answer, but I probably don't answer it right because I get asked a lot. All things go good, magically things place, shovels in ground.
I mean, I mean, the hope is, is that we get this to a point where we could actually start next summer grading the site.
I've been right there. That's kind of what I've said.
Probably grade and, grade next summer and fall and then most of the build would be 2027.
Yeah.
That's kind of how I, I just want to say.
Yeah, there's a lot of grading that needs to happen on this site. And, and just even the, the getting the grants and all that type of stuff together.
In this picture, it looks fairly flat, but it must not be that flat if it is.
If you, if you drive out on Pershuron, if it's still light when we leave here, drive out on Pershuron and turn left and drive all the way to the end. And then you'll go in a little cul-de-sac there and if you look back, you look at the site, the site's, it's like a hill going up like that.
Forty to, forty to fifty foot.
Zip lining, why didn't zip lining get on there?
I was out there at sunset one night and I was like, I cannot wait. Like it's so beautiful out there.
But even that, like that will be positioned to be an awesome sledding hill.
There is definitely enough grade where you could have a sledding. You could definitely have a sledding hill here. There's enough grade.
Which helps that, some of the comments about seasonality.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I thought that ice rink comment was interesting, especially with all the conversations we've had about the reality of ice rinks in Minnesota, but.
That is interesting, but then again, people are dreaming and they're not, yeah.
And it was, it was like year round though, ice, right? Like it was just like.
Like the community center, indoor.
Like an outdoor frozen year round.
I kind of took that as a nice arena like the community center.
I took the year round comment as saying, make this park be usable year round.
Which I, like sledding, yeah, which is good because we have a lot of parks that don't get used.
And depending on how you do your nature trails, some of those could be cross-country ski-able. I mean, there's, what's that park in Victoria where they do?
Yeah, Cover Park Reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's lots of opportunities in that woods.
Well, maybe I'll leave you with maybe a sentiment from the Park and Rec Commission, which I kind of appreciated. You know, one of the questions was, what's going to be the wow factor at this park? And I like the, what, that they think about that.
Ferris wheel. I'm just kidding.
Appreciate where they came to and it's the Universal Design Playground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and I think it's reminding us ourselves like that alone is going to be super cool to have in our community.
Absolutely. It will be a huge draw.
Along with Miracle League Field and I kind of look at everything else as sort of bonus, you know, compared to what we have in our system.
I had, took my son to college this weekend, so we were in the middle of Ohio and took Lincoln to the Universal Playground that they had there, which I thought was really cool. Looked a lot like what I would imagine ours would look like. But right next to it, instead of community gardens where they rented plots, they actually rented, they actually had people grow gardens where people could just come and pick vegetables. And so like if you're there and you saw a tomato, you can just come and pick a tomato and eat it. And I thought, oh, that's really cool.
You sure you were supposed to eat that too?
Well, I thought so.
Yeah, I mean, our library down there just did the same thing with herbs.
Yeah.
And they were well received, so.
Isn't that what the, what did you call it again? A food forest? Isn't that what it was meant to be?
Well, I'll have to say, just as a side note, that my husband was like, you should talk to the public works and see if they can plant apple trees. Because it would be really cool to go for a walk and there's like an apple tree and you can pick the apple. It's like, I'm not bringing that up. But then when I saw that on there and she, she expanded on it, I thought, well, I might be very intrigued by that, so. Well.
Bees when they're on the ground.
I know. That's, that's all I can think about is, as someone that stepped on a bee last Sunday, I don't know about that. No, I appreciate your time. Thank you for the update. I look forward to seeing more news come about. I don't know when you'll be back again with it, but.
I think in October sometime.
Okay. Yeah, that'll be amazing to kind of see something more sketched out, kind of more finalized in that sort of the look of the concept of the park, so.
I was just going to add one last thing. And I saw it with a sensory play, but you know, all of our parks used to have the, the little rocks? Whatever you call it, peed rocks or whatever they call it.
Peed gravel.
Peed gravel, yeah. And then, I don't know where all those rocks went, so maybe this is not even a fair thing to ask for, but an idea of like putting a big pit of rocks in for people to actually just go play, it's a lot like the fall corn pit things. People love those kind of things because they're sensory and you can play and build it up and run your trucks through it and a lot of the parks used, little kids used to bring their dump trucks and build, you know, fill buckets and all that. With the wood chips, that's kind of gone away. So maybe something from that perspective that's not really expensive, but very
Textile?
Yeah, sensory and, and easy to play in would be a good, and sand I think is messy, but those rocks are big enough. It's not so.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of playgrounds went away from the peed gravel because it technically doesn't need the ADA.
Yeah, you can't run wheelchairs in it.
That's ability, so then that's where the.
That's why I thought maybe just a big pit like a.
Something is sort of a, a specific feature could be something to think about.
And when kids throw peed gravel, it hurts a lot more than the little rubber, rubber.
Although when they fall in it, they don't get slivers like they do with the, but anyway, just something about the sensory that maybe would be a very easy, attractive thing.
Texture. Okay, great. Thank you.
Corn pits, yeah.
Thank you. Alright, well, that moves us along on the agenda to 5C, which is the Meadow Park update. You're just, you're just checking off all the boxes tonight, aren't you?
Yes, when you're going to see them again, it's right now.
I know, this is true. You turn around in your chair and come back. Oh, no.
I'm actually taking this one this evening. You get to hear a lot of me moving forward, so get used to my voice. Although I was told to keep this one short, so I Although I was told to keep this one short, so I will do that. We are here to give an update on Meadow Park. So for those of you who may not remember, or for those of you who are watching, Meadow Park is the park that was just to the west of the Public Safety Facility. So it was removed in order for that facility to go in. I think we're, Marshall and I are very excited to be here this evening. This has been a long time coming, so we hope you are excited about our plan as well.
That's why it was...
A little bit of background about how we got here and what we've been working on since that park was removed. There was a online survey that after Marshall just presented the numbers for Southwest Community Park seems a little underwhelming, but at the time, we are very excited about it. We sent postcards out to 921 homes and we got seventy, or excuse me, 96 survey responses. And I'll give a brief overview of what we heard in that survey in just a moment. We did two in-person kind of open houses. The first was at the community center with the Highway 41 and Engler Open House. We handed out little QR codes that directed people to the survey. And then Marshall and I also did a little pop-up event at the Chaska Place Apartments to gather some feedback from their residents as well. We have a pretty large steering committee made up of a variety of people from a bunch of different departments, including Parks and Rec, Police and Fire, Community Development, Public Works. And then we had Gabrielle Grindi from HKGI working on the plan as well. We also did have three neighborhood representatives that did provide us feedback on the plans and the process as well. Getting into the plan itself, we've gone through a few renditions. This one before you this evening is about 4,400 square feet, so it's about 300 more square feet than Hickory Park that just came in this year. And then one thing that we are excited... Well, my summary slide is not in this deck, so I will just quickly recap it for you from my memory and hope I don't miss something. So of those 96 responses, most of the people were walking or biking to the park, living within about 10-minute walking distance, which we typically expected. That's generally what we expect to see from a neighborhood park and their distance capture area. 10% of the survey respondents did note that they had a mobility limitation or an accessibility concern that would impact how they would access or utilize the park. The top kind of three amenities that came out of what people liked about Meadow Park and what they wanted to see in the new park aligned actually very well, citing the playground and just the variety of equipment that was there, and then the amount of shade and open space, and then thirdly, kind of the seating and the gathering components of that plan. And so taking those survey results and the feedback that we heard from those three residents, we went through a series of plans and the one before you that we have, again, 4,400 square feet of play area. We do propose to have pour-in-play surfacing at this location. And then focusing on, you know, how do we maximize shade trees? We know that there's some carryover requirements from Public Safety, so, but what types of varieties of trees can we use to really maximize shade within the park? And then also including a 20 by 20 shelter that would really allow for some engagement between Police and Fire and then residents as well. So I'll show you just a few slides at the Park and Rec.
I don't think anything's been shared.
We're not seeing any of your slides.
Well, then you can't even tell that my survey results weren't even in the slide deck.
I was thinking that.
Excellent job, Summer. I didn't even need it.
You didn't even need it until now. Look at that.
I just figured you were going to, it's just a nice recap.
Yeah, I'm just going to wow you with some pretty pictures at the end.
Well, now, we're going to be wowed.
Thank you for skipping the words.
Well, can you go back to the, the park looks really cool. We breezed right past it, but that playground...
No, we're going there. I just figured I'd show you the plan.
Yeah, she wants to build up to it.
Just to show, again, shelter, that play area, and then the connection to that trail that'll be put back in through the site, and then just sidewalk connections within that as well, tying into the Public Safety Facility. So the, we brought three concepts from playground vendors to the neighborhood representatives and had them provide feedback on that. They all unanimously agreed that this was the best one. And then the Parks and Rec at their most recent meeting concurred with that. So this is a more contemporary modular playground. I'm going to flip through a few of the images. There's some swings, as you can see in the background, some musical chimes. There's some little Police and Fire spring-loaded little rockers back and forth. My kids always love those, no matter how old they get. And then you see kind of this track weaved through that pour-in-play so kids can ride their bicycles, et cetera. Some of the, one of the comments that the neighborhood representatives made that I think you kind of see through these images is, this is really a great kind of hybrid of a ninja course and a playground. And so it's really filling that gap that we don't see at some of our other playgrounds while still providing a lot of climbing and slide opportunities. So that was brief. Sorry you didn't get to see all my slides.
That looks really cool.
So I'm assuming the floor is, the ground of the, is kind of that rubberized?
Yep.
Maybe recycled or something sort of turf-like.
It's actual poured in.
Oh, poured, okay.
Yeah, it's a pour-in-play. And so it actually, I mean, it stays there, it doesn't move and it's very soft.
Okay. Yeah.
Which is the next generation.
Well, this is really cool.
Woodchips.
My son and I used to go to this park and it was really prone to flooding or just a lot of standing water kind of in the middle of it. And so this is kind of neat to see a really nice revamped, you know, updated playground.
I like that it incorporates Police and Fire, but isn't like aggressively, you know? I think that's nice. I think the shelter's nice because thinking about like safety camp and stuff, is there still room for a helicopter to land? I'm just kidding. Isn't that what they did, right? The helicopter come land right there, wasn't it? Okay, I was like, am I crazy?
No, they, they probably can still land it in the parking lot.
Okay, nice. Um, so yeah, I think this is really cool and, yeah. I think the Police and Fire might be playing out on it themselves.
Yeah, no doubt.
We're just going to see them out there with the hams and...
So now that you kind of had the Park Commission kind of weigh in and you're bringing it here, what's, what's next steps and what's the timeline? Because I did have a resident at River City Days really live nearby and really, I think they're very, they're very interested.
The reason that we wanted to get this out for people's comments now is because if we're going to get this in and do this this fall, we need to start now.
Okay.
And so Brian's actually working to get things scheduled so that he can get in here now that, he probably finishes up the equipment in the spring itself, but then, yeah.
Yeah.
Really sort of gets the site ready and ready to accept the stuff so that by the time next summer comes, then people have it in.
Yeah, that was my assumption, but nice to hear it kind of secure.
And it can go in kind of faster. Like I felt like Lyons Park, when the equipment was replaced there, went kind of fast, stuff like the structure of it's kind of there, then the equipment goes in quickly.
And I feel like a lot of these neighborhood parks, they do it in a week. I mean, they're, I mean, there was something there already, but in and out in a week.
Yeah, so starting end of August is when we're anticipating that we'll be able to get into that park. And so you'll start to see some coordination between things that are happening over at the Public Safety Facility and some of those contractors will be doing some of the work here. And that really allowed us to maximize our budget and our timeline.
Awesome.
Yeah, just the fact that we don't have to bring another grading contractor in, that we just use the ones on site.
Yeah, that's really great.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah. And I'm sure as a resident, they'll be very excited to see that activity happening. It kind of finalizes the construction of the Public Safety Campus and kind of that finalized piece because I think some were worried that it was just going to be kind of an unchecked box for a little while. And it's nice that it's a priority.
Yeah, they'll see like the concrete curbs and all that, and so you can start to envision how a park will shape.
Yeah.
It's going to be such an awesome drive in the Chaska. You know, you get that whole space, like, you know, we're living through the pain now with the closure of the road and everything, but man, like new park, I mean, just, that's, it's exciting.
Yeah, very, very exciting.
Yeah, big kudos to both these guys. They've put in a ton of work into, you know, going through a public process is really time-consuming, but they've, they've done a great job of going through, making sure that the neighbors have been a part of the process. And I think came up with a really nice plans.
Yeah, that's really nice. It's nice to hear you had neighborhood representatives. I saw the postcard because I was in that mailing district. Yeah, I'm, thank you for casting a wide net and getting all the survey results on that. Great job. Keep up the good work. All right. Anybody else have any questions for, for Marshall or Ashley? Otherwise, we can move along on the agenda to approving the previous...
Might have more visitor presentation.
More, oh, yeah. Thank you. Okay.
That was a long visitor presentation.
That was, yes. Thank you for holding out. If there is anybody here in the audience, this is the time to come up, visitor presentation. If you're not on the agenda for anything, feel free to come forward and you just have to state your name and address for the public record. We're sitting pretty quiet in our chairs, so I'm going to, I'm going to lean on the...
I just wanted to make sure nobody got missed.
Okay. Okay. I'm putting them in the hot seat out there, all, all those, all those folks out there. Okay. Well, thank you for, for making sure I didn't breeze right along. All right, knowing that they had an opportunity and now as window is closing, we are going to move along to approval of the previous meeting minutes, the meeting minutes from August 4th of 2025. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, a motion from Councilmember Chevlin.
Second.
And a second from Council, Councilmember Benish, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's approved. Moving right along to our consent items. These items are items that don't necessarily need a lot of discussion, but we certainly can pull something off. If anybody has any questions or maybe a comment, I'd entertain a motion to approve otherwise.
Motion to approve.
Okay. A motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent items approved. And we're going to move along to our action items. And the first one is, or maybe the only one, is 8A. Adopt Resolution Number 2025-46 and 2025-47 and Ordinance Number 1068, Approval of the Preliminary Platte Rezoning and Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Cheval 19th Edition, Tollaro Curve, Quadranga Ventures, PC Number 2025-07.
Mayor, Councilmembers, the item in front of you tonight, it's been a few months since we've seen this, but this is Tollaro Curve, if you remember, is the, when you go into the Cheval neighborhood, go over the bridge and take your first right there, the single-loaded house street as you drive to the north. The proposal that you guys saw before in concept and now here preliminary is to add houses on the other side of that street, but also then help permanently preserve that pasture area there as green space in the community. So I believe since Nate's like, looks like he's not engaged, that must be...
Caught him.
He was like, were you under the bus over there?
I'm assuming it must be Ashley that's speaking tonight, so I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Yeah, your slides are on the screen.
I was just going to say, make sure my slides are showing. Double-checked this time. As Matt said, this is the horse farm site that you see right in northern Chaska with that white fence. It's a large horse pasture area right at the corner of 86th Street and Bavaria Road. Tonight, we are in the second phase of Chaska's three-step review. So we are in that phase where we are seeing more technical details on those plans and we're starting to see resolution to some of the items and issues that we identified in the concept plan, so that, that first step. There is one final step that'll come before you in the future, should they decide to move forward, and that's really that final review that happens where we see those final issue resolutions, final detailed plans before it would move into a permitting phase. The site is roughly 30 acres in size. There is an existing home and agricultural buildings with some accessory structure, smaller accessory structures in the more northeast corner of that site. The remainder of that property is currently being used for horse pasture. And there is some white fencing that buys sections through that property. It's mostly flat, but the highest points of the property is more in the northwest corner and then draining down from there. While that overall site again is 30 acres, we're going to be spending most of our time, as Matt said, in that more southwestern corner of the site. Back in February, there was a 10, the concept plan that you saw, just a quick refresher, 10 new single-family lots on that roughly six acres in the southwest corner. Those lot sizes were roughly 60 feet wide and ranged in size from 7,500 to 9,000 square feet. They were showing to connect that new public right-of-way and the utilities to the west into Tollaro Curve. And there was a stormwater management BMP that was shown to the east of that new cul-de-sac. There was landscaping that was also shown through Birmingham and some additional vegetation, both on the east and west side of that new development site. There was a neighborhood meeting held in November. There was roughly 20 residents that attended that meeting. They had a number of inquiries as it related to just the overall development in terms of density and future development opportunities of that larger site. They also had questions about new home design, size, and whether or not they would include basements. They also wanted to understand what the screening requirements were from the city and what they were proposing. And then they also had questions about construction timelines, traffic and access for the new development. The concept plan came before you as the Planning Commission and the City Council. So just to quickly recap some of those conversations, there were four residents that spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. They really summarized some of the HOA's position and how they've acquired outlots, which we'll talk about a little bit later. They had some encouragements for how the development would integrate into their, the Tollaro Villas neighborhood and then as well as the overall Cheval HOA. And they also had some comments and kind of some requests to do landscape islands within that new cul-de-sac, adding some additional screening, et cetera. They also just wanted to confirm one more time that that remainder of the 3910 property could not be further developed. Here at the council meeting, one resident spoke. They raised some additional concerns related to snow storage within the existing development and how that may be improved or worsened by any future development. And then they reiterated that their participation would continue to be required as the project moved forward. You as the council, you discussed the, how the project would be involved both with the Tollaro Villas HOA as well as the overall Cheval HOA. And then you encouraged and continued conversation between the HOA and the developer. The plan before you this evening has a lot of similarities to what you saw in the concept plan. That's still 10 new single-family lots accessed by that new cul-de-sac. The lot configurations changed slightly. Those lot sizes increased to 7,700 square feet to align with Tollaro Villas. In doing so, some of the widths were reduced and we'll talk about that a little bit... In doing so, some of the widths were reduced, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. There is some landscaping that is still being shown to provide a buffer between the new development and that existing development to the west. There's also more details on the screening that's being proposed on the north and east side of that new development. And we'll go through some of the details of that here in just a minute. And there's also a swale that is being proposed to capture water kind of on the eastern side of that cul-de-sac to direct that water down into a basin that wraps around the southern side of those new lots. And unlike the concept plan, there is pedestrian improvements that are shown on that north side of the new cul-de-sac. The new homes submitted elevations generally suggest single-level living with two-car garages. Floor plans generally are showing homes roughly with footprints of the two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet, generally two-car garages. These are really just shown to give us the flavor of what those character of those new homes could look like. We do have ordinances, as you're aware, that we would be reviewing at the time of a building permit as it relates to anti-monotony, et cetera. The grading plan is indicating that those lots on the northern side, so those five lots on the north side of the new cul-de-sac would have full basements, and the lots on the south side of that cul-de-sac would have walkout basements. So the first request this evening is to rezone the property from RR two to PRD eighty-nine, so a new planned residential district. Staff is ultimately comfortable with that request and is recommending approval this evening because their proposed setbacks are similar to what is happening at Tollaro Villas and within Cheval. So moving into the second request as it relates to preliminary plat for this evening and lot configuration, there's a lot of things happening on here on this slide, so I'll, I'll walk us through it. As part of the Cheval master development plan that was approved in the mid-two thousands, this site, there was twin homes that were contemplated for development. And the intent was really for all of that development on both sides of Tollaro Curve, that new cul-de-sac, to essentially mirror each other. So they were shown to be attached twin homes. When Cheval developed in two thousand and seven, their plans and the council approvals essentially split those attached units into detached townhomes that you see today. And the plan before you this evening is really showing a continuation of that detached townhome unit. So staff is, is ultimately comfortable with that as it continues the intent of having that mirroring on either side. Again, those minimum lot sizes are consistent with what Tollaro Curve developed with, but there was a reduction in the lot width. So included this evening, there is a condition of approval to bump up those lot widths to fifty-seven feet to be consistent with Tollaro Villas. Or Cheval Fifth, more formally. So looking kind of beyond those ten new lots, there is an outlot proposed to protect that stormwater and that berming that wraps around that new development. And then the remainder of those twenty-three and a half acres of that property would be placed into conservation easement to protect that pasture land in perpetuity. So one of the discussions that was had extensively at concept plan was really where the right place for that right-of-way to connect into Tollaro Villas. If you remember, when Cheval Fifth Edition developed, there was a small thirty-six-foot-wide touch point and then two outlots that were reserved to provide access for future development to the site. After that development happened, the HOA did acquire those outlots. So just leaving that small touch point, that's really half of the amount that the city would need for right-of-way. And so the developer worked extensively with the HOA to, to figure out what's a reasonable solution to get access into the site. Originally, the concept plan showed the access a little further south. But before it came, before you, that access was moved north at the request of the HOA. And the intent of that relocation was really so the headlights would be directed more between the homes across the street or towards their garages versus directly into their living spaces. So again, staff continues to support that relocation and that access. But we also acknowledge, and that's reflected in your conditions of approval for this evening, that there is some continued coordination and participation with the HOA to make that happen. The plans are included in your packet for this evening. There was a small change from when the planning commission reviewed this. The construction access originally was shown in this black hatched area. Similar to what was originally contemplated, though, that access would be used for kind of the site's initial grading, the utility connections, as well as the cul-de-sac construction. The applicant's narrative suggests that that would all roughly wrap up within the first ninety days or so from construction beginning. And then after that point, that construction access would be removed and restored back into pasture land. At the time, well, during the planning, or during our review, and as noted at the planning commission, there is a potential wetland that was identified, being located in the same areas that construction access. So supplemental plan had been submitted for your consideration that really moves that construction access north to avoid delays in requiring that wetland determination. Staff is, is comfortable with that. We generally concur. We understand that there's some additional details that we need to understand, but it probably would result in no longer needing to go through that wetland termination process. At the planning commission meeting, there was also significant conversation about the sidewalk. As currently, the existing sidewalk for Tollaro Curve wraps around the west side and terminates right before the, the cul-de-sac bulb. The new proposal is proposing something similar, so on the north side terminating roughly halfway through the cul-de-sac bulb. Staff noted in the report that this is a little awkward as there's not really a connection into that existing pedestrian network. And so included in your packet is a condition of approval. So we can continue to work through if that can, if there's a way to create a reasonable connection into that network or, and where the appropriate termination point is. The planning commission did comment that if there wasn't a way to do that, they would support ultimately removing that sidewalk from that northern side in the plans.
Why don't we just go around the whole thing?
That was, I, I think that was the original intent. However, you know, there, there is still how it's connecting into that network on the west side because there's not currently a sidewalk on the east side. So when Tollaro Curve, excuse me, when Cheval Fifth was developed, the intent was for there to be a sidewalk going all the way around. When the HOA acquired those outlots, they took some ownership to that. So there would be some coordination that they would have to participate in if they wanted to create that network around the existing cul-de-sac to tie into the new cul-de-sac.
Yeah, because I get, understand why on the original one, because the houses weren't done on the other side, right? It just seems weird and not consistent in the city to not, like, those houses on the south side, this is directionally appropriate, won't have sidewalks, but the other ones will. It just seems, like, I for sure feel like that whole new cul-de-sac probably should have had sidewalks all the way around. I understand, you can't fix the issue on the other end because that already exists, but.
Yeah, and I feel like they can still cross the street and then they're in more of a network of sidewalks. And so I agree, that was like, that very much showed to me that we would end a sidewalk right there.
I mean, you see those occasionally at different, and it just always looks strange. It looks.
Yeah.
I always feel like, oh, someone decided this, what was I gonna put the sidewalk? I mean, it just, because it just ends and you're like.
That's how my neighborhood is. It just goes to the park and then it ends. There's nothing in the cul-de-sac or the other side.
And they really can just cross the street and then they're in, then there's so many sidewalks. So just, I get that there's not like a lot of traffic, but to be consistent with the rest of our community. I, whenever I'm in a neighborhood that doesn't have sidewalks, I'm like bummed for them. And I'm like, someone should have planned better and put some sidewalks here. So, yeah, I feel like there should be sidewalk around the whole thing.
But it sounds like it's addressed.
Yeah, it's being addressed, yeah.
It's gonna still be have a conversation and, okay.
I'm not as supportive of like, just taking it out. I'm more like, put it around the whole thing.
Yeah, and, you know, as a planning staff member, I, I would concur with that. You know, if there's a way to continue the sidewalk versus just having it end, that would be the preference. And, but then, you know, again, continuing that conversation and figuring out what the correct connection into that existing network is, so.
I guess I don't understand why. Like, what's the financial or the.
I think that.
Marketing costs.
I think what they're saying is that the HOA owns that portion of the, the corner there, right? So it'd be having to cultivate the conversation with.
But they don't own the, the north side of that?
Yeah, exactly, because that's that, that's that little sliver of land that they originally, remember when they bought the outlots?
I do know this conversation.
Yeah, she, yeah, so I, I'm assuming that that falls within that vicinity since they moved it a little north. That sits in that area, but the south is part of that negotiated area. And so it's about negotiation with the HOA to give up that little piece so that that sidewalk can continue.
Agreed.
Okay.
Or if it can come around and, I guess, end there and cross.
Because I agree, I think like as a selling point, having a sidewalk in front of your home, I mean, some, maybe some homers don't like it, but I think it's, it is a little odd that there's some on the one side and not on the other.
Yeah, I can almost guarantee that those houses over there would enjoy having a sidewalk there to walk around, so.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure like the marketability of like what kind of demographic we're looking for, but it looks like the homes are looking, design-wise, slightly different from the other homes that are in there. So I imagine these being single-family homes, that you might have children as a concept in this. Whereas the other ones that are on the original street, they're, I, I didn't, when I door knocked, I didn't tend to see small children. I'm not saying that there's not any, but I'm assuming that our demographic might be a little bit different in this cul-de-sac. So sidewalks are kind of essential in that sort of standpoint for safety reasons, too.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the developer is here this evening, so they may be able to provide some additional commentary as to their thought process. My understanding from the engineer was they were essentially proposing a sidewalk similar in design to what exists in the neighborhood. But I think, you know, the developer is here this evening and has heard some of your commentary and has, I think, generally expressed willingness to continue that conversation. So looking through what it would take in order to get those, those new lots and, and those utilities and the new home in, there's roughly six point two acres of grading. One of the things that was noted in your report for this evening is that some of that grading does extend kind of beyond what we're calling that development site. And so included in your condition of approval is continuing some coordination to figure out what that right mix is. Is it adjusting the lot lines to accommodate that additional grading area? Are we comfortable with that grading area, knowing that it's in conservation easement? Or is there some reduction in the grading to get it within that development site? So we'll continue to work through that ahead of final. So you'll see that as a list of items to be resolved. And one of the visuals that hopefully was helpful when you went out to visit the site was kind of looking through those three layers of, of white fence. This photo doesn't do the best job explaining that, but hopefully you saw that when you were out using this diagram that as you're moving and driving down Bavaria Road, the extent of that development would push through roughly half of those back to white fences. So that kind of gave you an idea of where that development would start in relation to Bavaria. There is a twelve-foot berm that's being shown to provide some screening between Bavaria and the new development. But the important note is because of that, the existing topography and that swale that's being proposed, the top of that berm is, is really only two to four feet above the elevation of that new street. So while twelve feet sounds taller, it, there's not as much screening being provided by way of that. Another note in the report gets to just off-site tree impacts. So the development site itself is devoid of trees, but there are some trees that are off-site. The plan's showing physical removal of three trees. We know when you start to impact more than thirty percent of critical root zones of trees, it can have significant impacts on their health. And so included as a revised condition of approval was just noting that we want to have a better understanding of what those removals are, understanding and recognizing that the developer and the Tollaro Villas HOA had some agreements to some additional tree removals that would occur. And so we want, we're advocating for working with the developer to reduce the amount of grading impacts to those trees to try to preserve some additional trees, but then also really understanding what the true removal is ahead of final. So now moving into the third request as it relates to the comp plan amendment. So a comp plan, as you know, is the document that guides city growth for twenty years in a number of different areas, including land use, transportation, parks and trails, and public facilities. Since the two thousand comp plan, there was a key land use goal that was to provide a green belt around the city's edge to essentially preserve Chaska's identity. The comp plan in the land use chapter then does identify three development strategies and policies in order to really preserve and guide development within that green belt. And if you remember from the concept plan, one of the kind of lingering questions was whether or not a comp plan amendment would be required for this development to move forward. And part of that was rooted in recognition that in two thousand and six, there was an amendment to the two, twenty-twenty plan, again, that was adopted in two thousand, that really allowed for Cheval to develop. So it introduced that third development strategy to allow for cluster-style development. And at that time, in that two thousand and six amendment, the site, as you can see here, was included in all of the exhibits for that land use change and for that MUSA boundary adjustment. And that should be noted again that, you know, the ten units that you're seeing this evening and the two point four one acres of development area that, that staff has, you know, communicated extensively with the developer is really rooted in what was approved for the site as part of that two thousand and six amendment. And the, the question of whether or not the amendment was required was because the twenty-thirty and the twenty-forty, so those subsequent plans, showed that Cheval guided as conservation residential, but the subject property really remained as rural residential and was omitted from that MUSA map. So we've had conversations with the Met Council. They've confirmed that they do have to go through the comp plan amendment process. So there is information about what that process looks like in your staff report for this evening. And that's really because those, those, those subsequent plans became the official guiding documents. So those are the, the approved plans. So kind of walking through then, knowing that a comp plan is required, there are those three policies in the comp plan. They're the first to really get to rural development guiding. The second one gets to extremely low or very low density at community entrances. We're not gonna spend too much time talking about them because they're going under that cluster development, that third policy, similar to Cheval. The comp plan does say that in order to do a cluster development, you have to go through a comp plan amendment process. It outlines then a number of objectives that, that staff is. Uh, it outlines then a number of objectives that, that staff is looking at and evaluating, uh, when determining if that, that amendment is appropriate. It really gets to, uh, location of the site, uh, the availability and connection to uh, existing infrastructure or proposed infrastructure, uh, and then it's looking at, uh, what the development density is. And so you can see that, uh, it's checking those boxes. Uh, the remaining box then really gets to uh, view shed, uh, open space and natural resource protection at key community entrances. And so the, the green belt plan, there's, there's eight community entrances, uh, identified. Uh, one of them is northeast of the site, so at that eighty-sixth street and Bavaria Road intersection. Uh, the comp plan is really seeing development at those, uh, key community entrances is extremely important. So it's, it's providing a lot of guidance, uh, for what that view and what that feel should be at that community entrance. And you can start to see that in, uh, Cheval's approved landscaping plan, uh, that staff used to evaluate the current proposal and then what's out there today. So as you move from the Victoria-Chaska city boundary and as you're moving east uh, towards the subject property in that key community entrance, you're starting to see an increase in screening. So on the kind of Victoria-Chaska boundary, you're, you're still seeing some of those rooftops. You're still seeing some of that development. As you get to, uh, that roundabout, that traffic circle, even though development is still similarly distanced, you're not seeing it. You're, you're really seeing this bermed and this heavy landscaping. And the thought then is that that is providing that, that transition into that key community entrance. And so we're, we're evaluating, uh, again, using the Cheval's approved landscaping and screening plan that is really protecting that view shed inwards, uh, so from those, those adjacent roadways inwards towards the development uh, to the concept plan and, uh, the current plan. At concept plan, uh, we noted that there's probably some additional landscaping needed. We wanted to understand, uh, what that view shed was by way of some sections. And the applicant, uh, did revise their plans. They provided some additional screening to the north, provided again, some additional information on, uh, what that birmingham, uh, looked like. But, uh, staff is really, still, uh, has some concerns as it relates to what that view shed looks like. And that gets to, you know, the original, the approved screening section, uh, for this area is including a, a tall berm, uh, roughly a hundred and feet wide. There's really a mix of natives, coniferous and deciduous trees uh, that are really obscuring that view, uh, from the adjacent roadway. Uh, the views, uh, as currently proposed are really relying heavily on, uh, fully grown vegetation. So all of the vegetation that's really proposed is, is at a pretty similar height of forty to fifty feet. And they're relying on, uh, that about ten to fifteen years from, uh, development to provide what they're showing as, as the, uh, full, uh, obscuring. Uh, but again, uh, there's the landscaping choices. Uh, there's two coniferous species. They're known to drop their needles. So there's not gonna be as much screening during the winter time when those remaining deciduous tr- trees are dropping their leaves. And then again, uh, relying less on the birmingham and more on that full growth. Uh, so I think in summary, uh, it's important to note that staff is, is ultimately supportive of the comp plan amendment and to re-guide the property and then also, uh, to adjust that MUSA boundary. And we'll continue to work with the developer on, uh, that view shed, uh, analysis. So some things to work on, uh, ahead of final plat, as staff sees it. Again, landscaping plan and view sheds. Uh, we'll continue coordination on, uh, off-site grading impacts. Uh, we'll continue to work on sidewalk connections, drainage and stormwater, and then just the understanding conserva- the conservation access and right-of-way easements. And then ensuring that those lots are reconfigured, uh, in such a way that the lot widths are matching, uh, Tolero Villas without, uh, exceeding that two point four one acres, uh, that was originally allocated for the property. And I, I weaved some of this into my presentation, uh, at the Planning Commission last Thursday. Uh, there were four residents that spoke. A lot of their comments echoed, uh, what those heard during the, uh, concept plan. I think some of the newer ones, again, uh, there was some conversation about, uh, who's gonna own the fence when it's relocated and what are the responsibilities of that. Uh, they were advocating for, uh, a longer use of that construction access. And so they were requesting some additional conversations and coordination as it centered around that. The Planning Commission, uh, ultimately concurred with a lot of their, uh, concerns uh, and directed staff to continue to work with the developer on some of those outstanding items. And then ultimately, uh, they made the recommendation to you this evening for approval. So with that, uh, there are three requests before you this evening, and I'll turn it back to you, uh, Mayor, if you have any questions or discussion.
I have a question. It might be, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It might not be significant, but when does the development of the site plan on starting? And how does that coincide with the tearing up and repaving of Bavaria?
Well, the, the actual milling and overlaying of Bavaria will probably only take a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So it won't take that long. Um, I don't think it's really gonna have too much of an impact, uh, just because of where they're gonna have their construction, uh, access going back there. Uh, but that, the milling and, and overlay operation is actually pretty short.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff at all? All right. What developer wants to come on up and have a chat?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Members of council appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening. My name is Megan Rogers. I'm an attorney with Larkin Hoffman. I work with Cadriga Ventures, uh, who's the developer for this project. Um, so, so first and foremost, really wanna thank staff for the time that they've taken, uh, working with us on this project. Uh, it's about two years, uh, in the, in the line of getting ten lots. Uh, so that is, um, it's, it's been sort of a long road. Um, but that has, uh, really been based upon the collaborative approach that we've taken with the neighborhood um, to work to sort of make this work not only, uh, for, for our client and for the Stobner parcel, um, but also for those single-family homes, um, that have been there for over twenty years now, which is kind of surprising. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit more about the areas of flexibility, uh, that we brought up to the Planning Commission and wanted to bring, um, you know, sort of in, in context and in, in concert with staff's presentation tonight. Um, so, you know, first and foremost, this plan is aligned with the one-third, two-thirds, uh, allocation of developable area and non-developable area that's consistent within Cheval. Um, and staff highlighted the lot sizes in particular, um, as an area that we needed to improve upon from concept plan. And we were successful in that in terms of the square footage. Um, one thing that is remaining and that we're, we're working through from an engineering perspective, but I would appreciate council's, um, uh, advice and, and thoughts on is that, uh, if you look at the overall site plan, uh, there are, uh, the two lots that are immediately adjacent to the cul-de-sac have limited right-of-way, um, or limited lot frontage. They have, they're the same lot size as the rest of the lots, but they're sort of cut in a triangle. Um, and then this goes on to talking a little bit more about, uh, the site plan and the sidewalks that are proposed for the site. Um, and one of the things is that those two lots are unique, um, in terms of how they interact with the roadway. Um, and so, but they, uh, will physically appear the same fifty-eight lot square footage. And if you see on that site, they sort of extend backwards.
Hold on, Ashley, can you, can you bring it up? I'm as, I, I just wanna double check that I'm got the right ones in front of us that you're speaking about.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So you're saying rather than rectangles, there are lots of more triangle, like pie-shaped?
That's correct. And so from a code perspective, um, they, they do measure at forty-two square feet across, um, in the driveway area. But when they immediately back up, um, you see that they actually are angled outwards.
Is it number five on both? Is that what we're speaking about?
Yep, that's exactly right. Um, and those are fifty-eight feet across. Um, and so, you know, when we look at this site, we are limited in terms of uh, how we develop the property, uh, based upon that one-third, two-thirds analysis. Um, and we found this design to be sort of effective way for these lots to present um, just as the Tolero Curve Homes present, um, while also, uh, making sure that we are very much abiding by that one-thirds, two-thirds, the two point one acres versus the six point two acres, um, of developable space. Um, and that is a condition of approval that staff is requiring or recommending tonight. Um, and I would seek, uh, you know, council's guidance on that, um, and if there is an opportunity for some flexibility there. Uh, and in concert, as you, as you look at that design and, and consider that, I'll talk a little bit about how the sidewalk design evolved. Um, and because it has to do with this, uh, lot outline as well. And so the, the sidewalk that's proposed on the north side of the Tolero Court, um, it currently, uh, it aligns and connects with the existing sidewalk, uh, on Tolero, uh, Tolero Drive. Tolero Curve. There we go. Tolero Curve. Um, and so the idea is to create sort of pedestrian connectivity so that you cross at one location, um, as compared to crossing within the street. Crossing within the street is certainly, certainly something that we could do when we could add a sidewalk, um, on the south side here. We do wanna keep the majority of the sidewalk outside of the cul-de-sac. Um, and the reason for that is that Tolero, the, the residents of Tolero Curve have long talked about the issue of snow, snow storage on this property. Um, and one of the things that they would like to see is to be able to push snow all the way to the end of this expanded cul-de-sac. Um, and then this would allow for less impervious surface in that area, and it will also create consistency in terms of overall green space. Um, so this area, um, at the end of the cul-de-sac is going to be, um, is, again, is open space, is an outlot um, and will go back to the overall Tolero Villas, conjoined Tolero Villas-Tolero Court neighborhood.
Is that, we, we plow this, right? Yeah, okay.
Is that cul-de-sack big enough? I mean, a lot of the cul-de-sacks in my neighborhood, the snow ends up in the middle.
That's, that's been our practice, is to actually push it in the middle of the cul-de-sack.
That's what I was wondering. Like, we're not gonna push it up on some grass.
No, we don't push it up.
Now, the neighborhood would like us to put an island in the middle of this cul-de-sack that would be similar to what is in the existing, uh, Tolero Curve cul-de-sack, which would require someplace to not put the snow in the middle.
Well, that's why they have nowhere to put their snow.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't matter if there's an island or, or if there isn't. We put the snow in the middle of, of the cul-de-sack.
Even if there's an island?
Yeah.
The only one I can think of is over in the harvest.
On the snow question, um, and this is me getting into, uh, Tolero Curves Neighborhood Association's business, but I believe they have snow clearing for their driveways.
Oh, yeah, that's what it was.
And I suspect that those snow clearers are dragging the snow onto the street and then pushing it somewhere, right? Whereas those of us without that service just put it under our yard.
Are you?
So I think that maybe that's
That's.
one root of their concern, or snow. I think it's driven more by that than.
Okay. Is this going to be a part of the same HOA?
It sure is.
Okay. So then they would be clearing the driveways of these homes as well?
So they're pushing their snow up on their grass.
Nobody else would, but right now they're not. They're just going across.
No, I know, no, I get that, but it wouldn't be, uh, like, we're not gonna put the snow up there.
It would be their driveway.
No, I mean, we.
So they're gonna have to drag theirs. That's fun for them. Whoever removes their snow is gonna have to go around our snow pile, put the snow up there. That's getting silly.
Or like she said, they're gonna, instead of having to push it across the street, they're gonna have to start putting it on their yards like everyone else.
So they have an island right there. Are we putting the snow in that island? Is that what we're doing?
I don't know for sure, but I suspect we are. I mean, I don't know what kind of landscaping, uh, exists there, but I suspect we are putting snow there.
I just don't remember an island being on there.
I guess my suggestion would be, you know, if there's a discussion on the island, there's a discussion around where snow is gonna go, discussion on how the lots are going to, you know, ultimately be solved for, um, I mean, those are all questions, right, that staff is happy to continue to work with the developer on. I think there's a coordinated effort that needs to happen with Public Works to make sure that we understand that. And, you know, hopefully there's ways to, you know, make those adjustments to make the lot was, uh, you know, conform to code. I would, if you're looking for a suggestion, you can ask it, but I'll give it anyway. Um, I think, you know, those are.
I always like Nate's suggestions.
There you go. I think those are great things for us to work with the developer on. I, I don't know that those are issues that will get solved here this evening.
Yeah, I just don't think we have enough information to solve that.
Okay. So we're gonna continue the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, cause we really need to be able to talk with Public Works about, I mean, cause this isn't the only neighborhood, i- if they are getting their, their driveways plowed. It's not the only neighborhood associ- association we have where that happens. I mean, when I lived in Cloverfield, we had that at our house. And so, I mean, this happens in other places in the community, so we, we can definitely figure it out.
Okay.
Ms. Rogers, who maintains the landscaping in the island if that happens?
It is the HOA.
Going to an encroachment agreement? That's in public right of way.
Understanding that that is a special, uh, that's a special island. It also has utilities and electricity.
Magical island?
Attached to it. Yes, it's magical. And it has special powers, Mr. City Attorney. So I, I, I know, I probably don't know enough about how that existing island works, but it is a design feature that the, the neighborhood specifically raised at Planning Commission as a desire. Um, now from a development pers- perspective, you know, we would wanna work through that, uh, with the city and also, you know, from, from a, from a practical perspective, I think we believe that not having an island is, is the eas- is the best way to build this, um, because it's difficult for snow plows. Uh, curbs are often chipped in the course of sort of getting around that in terms of larger trucks. Um, there are the maintenance requirements, all of those types of things. Uh, and so we would not necessarily be in, we, we are not married to the idea of an island. Um, and certainly if there are reasons that it would not be beneficial for the city, we would be interested to hear those.
I agree with Nate and, and trust that everything will work. But I will say that I am certainly not a fan of creating
Obstacles.
obstacles or something different for our city plows
Yeah.
that create a complaint cycle. Because I can see how that could create a complaint, you know, like, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing because they forgot and they put it in the middle, because everywhere else they're putting it in the middle.
Right.
And, and we all know and take pride for two things. One, we know that getting road plows are important in Minnesota. And we do take a lot of pride in the city of Chaska of getting people their road plowed quickly.
Yeah.
And so I, I again.
And safely.
Safely. So I trust that it'll all work out. I, I will say, I really do not like the idea of like, for this group, we're gonna push the snow onto a grassy space. Because in the end, I don't think we are. And then it's weird because our snow will be one place and their snow will be somewhere else and it just becomes.
Yeah, I mean, I can understand the aesthetic of it, but I agree. And I also look at just the structure of that cul-de-sack in comparison to the existing one. And they're even shaped a little bit differently. I just don't, I don't view that as a successful entity there, but.
Yeah. But again, I, you summed up well. It'll work its way, it'll work its way out. You're very engaged right now.
He became re-engaged.
After he got called out. At least he stayed.
I hope that gives you a little bit of clarity.
Yeah, no, it certainly does. And I appreciate it. And, and so then there's one area, another area of clarity um, that I was hopeful that we could discuss this evening. Um, and that's specifically with regard, uh, to the landscaping that surrounds this property. And, you know, staff has done a really nice job, uh, in talking about the goals of the comp plan require this area to feel visually remote. Um, that, those are sort of the magic words that are incorporated into that descriptive language. Um, and in one of the things that is important to our eventual builder, which is Ganya Homes and Stonegate, um, is to, uh, can retain some of the view shed of the equestrian facility um, in terms of how the new homes, as well as the, the existing homes, see through, um, the supplemental landscaping to the equestrian lots.
So our existing homeowners are, are wishing to see the, the equestrian farm.
Everybody wants to see the horses, is the, is the general answer here.
I wanna see the horse.
I, I know. I just wa- I wanna make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
No, that's exactly right. Uh, and, and so one of the, the issues that raises is that the, um, along eighty-sixth street and the areas that, that Planner Colley shared, um, there are more dense, uh, tree screening areas there. However, they're approximately a hundred feet from eighty-sixth street. Uh, the edge of. The edge of this six-acre parcel is 600, or 768 feet from 86th Street. And so, we would recommend and we would seek council support for sort of a layered approach to screening in this space, which is, we're retaining the broader equestrian fields through that conservation easement. Then there will be the berm that was well noted, is 12 feet, but really appears as five feet. So, about a me-size berm. And then, and then the trees that will cascade off of that. That is, the, the desire of our builder is to ultimately be able to have some ability to see through to those larger equestrian spaces. And we believe that that is consistent ultimately with the guidance of the comp plan because the distance between these homes and the roadway, along with the preservation of an agricultural use, retains that visually remote feel.
So, in a less fancy way of saying that.
Well, so, I, I mean, obviously, I think these guys have to take a look at, at that. The one cautionary sentiment I'd throw out is that there was a lot of thought put into Chevelle and a lot of thought put in, put into the fact that it was originally guided as four houses per 40 acres or one house per 10 acre. So, it felt very rural. One of the things, and you saw it on the pictures that they showed from the 86th Street on the north side of the, the site, even in skinny areas where there wasn't a lot to work with, there was...
Thank you, Ashley.
There was pretty significant birmingham that was put up there to really create, to, to really, that people didn't see houses when they were driving down the road that really maintained that rural character. If we were to do something that really didn't create that, that visual block from people driving down the road and seeing those homes, it'd really sort of take away from, from what everything else in Chevelle has worked to, to maintain is those view sheds.
And respectfully, I would add that retention of those view sheds is achieved through the distance. It's achieved through the retention of that broader conservation easement, the existing pastures. Those pastures are not going to be planted or treed, right? They are, they are going to be utilized as, as equestrian training facilities as they are today. And that space, that, that continued sort of visual will continue. And then, with the, sort of the, the treed proposal that we have put forward, which includes a berm and trees, but not as heavy as, as currently proposed for those properties that are substantially closer to the roadway.
Which I think overall makes sense because they're closer to the roadway, but you're doing that staggered approach of the berm and then the trees behind it, so you'll still have that rural feel. But I think it also lends to being able to see those equestrian. If you have too many trees, all of a sudden, you've lost your view of, you know, the equestrians. I think that part makes sense.
That was kind of the point.
But...
Yeah, if I, if I might just kinda add here, I think, going back to the vision that's established for the Green Belt, that's articulated in the conference of plan, it's really about setting a rural edge and separation for Chaska as a community. And so, it points towards these key entry points, which one of them is Bavaria Road, and setting that rural view shed and wanting to have that clear, you know, separation that preserves the city's identity as a standalone community. And that's, you know, that's the big driving factor behind this. So, I think for councils, you're thinking through, you know, the guidance and, you know, what level that we're trying to achieve here. The reason that staff is recommending what we are is to apply the policy to be consistent with the level, also to be consistent with the level of landscaping that was anticipated in the, in the concept plan for Chevelle that was originally approved. But also thinking ahead, this is not the only area of Chaska that has yet to develop and establish the Green Belt. In this location, I think the, you know, one of the benefits out of this project is that it does complete an, an edge to the Green Belt and it does complete a key community entrance. But since it does complete that, I think doing it right is important, whatever right means. I think staff's got our version, obviously, the developer's making a different, has a different perspective. But the nature of the policy for the Green Belt is not necessarily focused on the view shed for the folks or the, the users that lie within it. It's really focused on the view shed for the entry point.
I think that's a really key point here is when, when the city changed its, its plan out here, it was to say, what is gonna benefit the community? Not what's gonna benefit this individual homeowners that are within that neighborhood. Not that they shouldn't have a great place to be, but the goal wasn't to say, okay, there's a horse stable that's outside, we want them to see it. It was to say, no, the community drives down Bavaria Road. We wanna make sure that we keep that identity of Chaska, that it doesn't bleed into another community like Victoria and that we, that we have a community benefit that comes out of that. Not just individual benefits that come out of the homeowners that can look out into the, into the horse area.
And I feel like residents, not all of them, but I think that, that's an asset to the residents of that space too, right? Like, I get the horse thing, but, I mean, to feel like you're...
In a more rural setting.
Yeah, I mean, that's the setup, so... I guess it's like one-on-one, like, I sided with you with the snow removal and the sidewalk situation, but I kinda hold true on the city here where there's a lot of great things about those houses in that space. And I feel like preserving the community asset versus I like to see the horses. Again, I say, I don't say that lightly, it sounds like it's kinda funny, but it's true. I would side with that, that city piece, that's just kinda my perspective because, again, I think that is important.
Also, kinda think back, I think about just the intention of what this neighborhood was originally supposed to look like. And the originality of it was that there was going to be houses on both sides of this road. That view shed would have been...
Changed then.
Changed then. And I know that the HOA of this cul-de-sac, they went through and they bought the outlots that kind of maybe preserved some of it, so they do have some benefit in that. But then, there was also an opportunity for this to be developed. And that sometimes is kind of, those realities, even though it can be really hard, that what you're gonna see out your backyard may change as there is open, developable land. And that's just sometimes, those are just those painful realities for, for the homeowners, unfortunately.
I think that's well said, we've had a lot of development with conversation about, I was used to an open field, it's now, I'm used to...
And like you said...
Open field and it's lighted ball fields and turf spaces, right?
Yep.
It's, it's, if it's not horses, it's gonna be something else that people get used to.
And that's not said to minimize that, I understand the, like, the, the financial investment, the emotional investment in homeownership, and so, I don't take that lightly. But it is also kinda threading that needle of what are we gonna be able to do to make this viewscape look rural and beautiful? 'Cause that's why they selected that and why these future homeowners are, you know, going to select this neighborhood as well. But I also think, just as a whole, the aesthetic of the neighborhood plan for the community is something that we have to be very mindful of what the originality, what the intention was.
And I think to tag team off that, we've gotta be, we've gotta stick to what was originally planned because otherwise, if one neighborhood says, we want this view, and then the next one says, oh, I'm losing my view, but that's not fair, you did, you know, so, back to all the easements and everything else we've done, you have to keep it fair. And if it's...
Innequities, yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I thank you for your time this evening and I very much appreciate staff's support of the project and we look forward to bringing you a final plat very quickly.
Thank you, Megan.
Appreciate you being here.
I did have, so, I just had a quick question. I don't think you're, I think it's more of a staff question, so you're okay. I wasn't gonna let you run off and then make you run back up. The conservation easement, the, so the horse farm is going to be there and it sounds like it's gonna be occupied. So, there, it will be, someone will live there, right, as part of that? Or is that not, I mean, that was one thing I was kinda like, that's a...
Are we talking about the old Redmond Ranch, that thing?
No, it's the...
The Stubner?
Home on the Range, is that what it's called?
So, there, Mayor, if I may, currently, they do Airbnb, the existing home out, so it is actively being listed. I don't believe the intent is for the property owner to reside at that property, but...
But just continue to have it be a rentable Airbnb space? Okay, I just was curious if there were gonna be people on that property, okay. Does anybody have any other questions for, for staff or for the applicant? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion, we've got a few, got a few of them. I gotta get them in front of me.
I would just point out, the comp plan amendment requires a fourth vote.
Oh, thank you.
That's a lot of pressure.
Really teeing it up over there, Mr. Melkert.
Given that there was some spirited discussion.
Well, we just didn't know it. Okay, well, all right, in that spirit, I'd still entertain, entertain a motion. I'm trying to pull them up too.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull them up. My thing is like for... I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-46.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Grau, any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The next is, I think, an, the adoption of ordinance number 1068.
No.
No, we need to do...
I'll make a motion for Resolution Number 2025-47, DPL, 19th edition.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Benish, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Now, you can have your ordinance.
Now, I'd entertain a motion for ordinance number 1068.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Shevlin. And I'll make a second, so, second from Mayor Hubbard. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Ordinance carries, all right. Motion passes, moving on. Did it, did it meet your approval, Mr. Melkert?
He was smiling.
Oh, good. Smiles, okay, well, that moves us along in the agenda, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, so, we got the bills, that's what's next. Does anybody have a question on a bill?
I have a question, but I'm gonna take this opportunity to put someone on the spot to give me some information.
Hey, I'm Mike.
No, it's good, it's good, so, regarding...
I like that.
Yeah, last time you shows up.
I'm fully engaged.
Okay, you know, you should name that at Nate over there, 'cause he is now fully engaged.
All right, so, wanted to just talk a little bit of, it's regarding the community giving of, for Nick Mason's fund.
For what?
For Nick Mason's fund donations. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to ask and, and make it public again, just of what that is, who Nick was. I was fortunate enough to, to know him personally and work with him on the park board. And so, when I saw that, I, I wanted to just take the shout out and I know you weren't prepared for that, but I'm sure you can talk about it, or someone can talk about it. But just talk a little bit about what the Nick Mason Fund is and who he was.
First of all, Nick Mason was an individual who was a reporter for the Chaska Herald for some time. He actually, he was a reporter in many different newspapers, like, big newspapers across the country and ended up moving to, to Chaska and, and was a reporter here. At the same time, he served on the park board and became very passionate about just our whole parks program, our community center, everything in the community. Unfortunately, he got ill and passed away and, boy, I'd say that's probably about 10 years ago now that he passed away. And when he did pass away, his wife created, donated money to the city and sort of created seed money for the Nick Mason Scholarship, which in essence allows people who aren't able to afford our recreational programs and services the opportunity to be able to have that scholarship pay for it. And what's been great about it is, you know, it started with the seed money that came in there, but it's been replenished by people donating to this as well as...
Dunk tank?
The dunk tank, you know, different fundraisers like that to be able to put dollars back into that fund. And that fund is, is really used, which is really great. And just shows what kinda legacy he, he left on for our programming, so...
Perfect, that's exactly what I wanted to just share with everyone, 'cause, yeah, it just jumped out to me and he was awesome to work with and was, you know, you said it right, passionate for the details.
I was gonna say, he was a super detail guy.
I remember some of those, those park board meetings, 'cause it just, you'd get into the details and, and you just, and you need that, you need someone who just, you know, gets in on those details, it was great. But, you know, sometimes you're kinda like, can we, can we get past this, right? But, so, I appreciate that, thank you for that conversation.
That's a great question and, or a great explanation. Mine wasn't so much a specific bill question, but I, Mount Pleasant was on here and, you know, we do, we, we maintain that cemetery. My question was, kinda what's the schedule of maintenance, like, for bigger maintenance pieces of Mount Pleasant? 'Cause I, I had some constituents, you know, ask me, like, you know, the gate, you know, some of those bigger components, like, what's the schedule like on that?
I, I don't have it written from me now, what it exactly is. But typically, especially like the gate out in front, that gets a lot of snow spray coming off of Highway 41, which has salt and all that kinda stuff with it. So, it is about every 10 years that we have to go in and we have to completely refinish it. That is the original gate, so that, that dates way back, so it's...
Mount Pleasant, the cemetery of 41?
So, it's, so it's a very old thing. If you go to some of the tombstones in the very first parts of the, of the cemetery are definitely the pioneers of this area that were buried there. So, we do that. I've been asked before about if we ever jack up tombstones, things like that. That ends up being the responsibility of any family members. But we take care of sort of more like the infrastructure, like the roads, the fencing.
What about like the flowers and like memorial and trees?
Yeah, so there's a schedule that those stay out. And I, the thing I don't know is I don't know if we actually go through the process of, of cleaning those or if that's done by, we contract out the mowing of that to, to an outside party. Typically, we try to leave memorials around as long as possible and typically, it's seasonal then when, when they're actually removed. So, things that just don't make it through the winter and those, those types of things, use it as an opportunity to, to clean, you know, things that are around graves. 'Cause people can put a lot of stuff around that and everyone wants to know, we'll get comments about that.
Yeah, yep, and that was kind of, kind of in that, in that remedy or that line, so...
I know they did just go through and they added like row markers and benches and things that looked really nice. It doesn't seem like they take things off too often, 'cause like in my dad's grave, I know that we had like some stuff sitting there a long time that I went to clean a stone, some special cleaner and like removed all of that stuff. So, it does seem like they don't, they kinda leave it.
Yeah, it's, there's, there's a little...
I'm sure it depends on how much it's like, like blowing.
There's a little history to that, there was, there was one family in particular that, this was years ago, maybe 25, 26 years ago, they got quite upset when we removed some stuff off of there. And so, we've been, we've been very judicious about not doing it unless it really, you know, something that needs to be, you know, addressed.
Sure, okay.
It, it's a, it's a sensitive topic.
Absolutely, well, absolutely, absolutely. And I also think too, just the, like, geographically, it's like, you know, it's kinda hilly and, and the history of it. So, you know, I imagine that's a challenge to maintain, so...
I would be interested in like the sidewalks and the road, 'cause I think the road might have been done in the last several years or like at least overlaid.
I think it was overlaid at the same time that they did the fence.
Yeah, I think that was it, but the, in the middle, those sidewalks, I think, are pretty rough. So, and they might be talking about that. But the benches and the, like, the markers and, like, the row markers and some of the signage looked really nice when they did that a couple of years ago.
I'll, I'll find out specifics, so...
Okay, no, that's fine, it was just something that, again, at River City Days was asked and I didn't have a, I didn't write it down, but when I saw it up on the bills, I thought, oh, yeah.
I know when I've been up into, we go bi-monthly up to the Edelwood neighborhood and I know I've gotten that question.
Yeah, and I think that some of the residents that were, that live in that neighborhood were just curious. And I think some of them even in, kind of expressed that they would be willing to volunteer, but I, I obviously don't wanna put anybody on... But I, I obviously don't want to put anybody up to that. I just didn't, you know, it was just more of like, oh, find out some more information, so. Awesome. Okay. Anybody have any questions further? Otherwise, we'll do a roll call vote here. Oh, no, we need a motion, a second. Wow, I'm jumping, jumping off. Thank you. Motion from Councilmember Gra, a second from Councilmember Shevlin. All those, or wait, roll call vote. Yes.
Councilmember Benish.
Yes.
Councilmember Shevlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Mayor Hubbard.
Aye. I, I had it together and then I start falling apart about this point in time in the meeting, so bear with me, people. Yeah, it's been a long day. Okay, that brings us to other business. Let's start with Councilmember Gra today.
Sure. I just use this really nice magazine in front of me to jot down ideas that come to my mind. So sorry, whoever this woman is on the front. Just a couple of things, just a shout out to the Chaska Cubs. Good luck. States they're qualifying, they got fairly high, I think they're the number two overall seed, if I understand how CDL works on that bracket. So good luck. They've had a really good year. I know we've talked about it before. And so the state tournament starts. And I know there was some, I don't have the details, but Facebook's great for that. There is opportunities to ride a bus, to go to the game, to cheer on the Cubs. And let's hope they make a long.
I think it's in Gaylord, right?
Yes.
Yes, yep, yep.
So, yeah, Sunday.
On that same, same theme, sports theme, also want to recognize, well, actually, I'll just say school theme. Recognize that a lot of extracurricular activities started this week with sports and everything like that and arts as well. And I, I think it's, I don't take this for granted just because I clearly, if people watch any of this, they realize I'm a passionate sports individual in general and an inspiring arts person, but I was not very artistically inclined. But when you talk about the best small town in Minnesota and you talk about community, you can't ignore the, the fact that sports and arts for the school system builds that, right? So that's why I, I don't take that for granted and just good luck and wish those teams well and those arts well as those go well. And because we will not have another meeting before school starts, to remind individuals to slow down on roads. Buses will be, buses will be out, new traffic patterns, kids getting used to those. So wishing all those families a successful start to their school year. A shout out to all administration and staff and teachers. You are awesome. We could not have communities without you. So just a, a thankful, I know they're exciting. I, you know, I know a few teachers who are, you know, back in their school or in their classrooms this week. So appreciate that. And then lastly, a shout out to my oldest son, who on Saturday will become a teenager. Which is a little, you talk about feeling old. There it was, right? So happy birthday, Elijah, on Saturday.
Wow, thirteen. That's crazy.
And that is all I have. You're telling me.
I can't even believe that. Wow, okay, all right. You just blew my mind. Okay, moving on. All right, Councilmember Shevlin.
So I wanted to remind you that you can take the bus to the fair and to the Renaissance. It started. And I have seen, at least at East Creek, a lot of traffic coming in and out of there. So that's exciting that people are using it. And you pay for one and you can go to both. So if you have an interest in both, feel free to take up the public transit option. Again, on your back, the school is starting, so good luck to all of the school kids. I always have to add, for the private school kids, we don't necessarily see as much about you, but we're excited for everything you're going to do this year. And I know there are eleven Chaska Kindergarteners going to St. Hubert's this fall. So that is a huge classroom Chaska and very exciting to see all those guys coming. And then last but not least, if you are driving down forty-one, please, please, please slow down a little bit. There is a lot of traffic that thinks because there's no traffic coming, stoplights don't matter. And there's been a, a big problem with cars going fast. So for those that do use forty-one as an access out to the rest of the world or for school kids that aren't going to start using it to get into school, just make sure you're slowing down because the stoplights right now don't mean much. But they're, they're there for a reason.
Those are all very, very valid points. Awesome. All right. All right, Councilmember Benish. He's going right on down the line.
Yeah, I want to echo all those comments, especially with school starting. Everybody just be mindful, especially with new drivers out there too. Driving to school for the first times. Let's just be aware of that. Chaska Cubs, that's awesome. Excited to see how far they go. Good luck to all the Chaska sports teams as well. And lastly, I saw a post not too long ago this week that Patron will be reopening sometime soon. We don't know when, I don't think. But good luck to them and hopefully things have improved for them. And they're excited to reopen. So looking forward to that. That's all I got.
Great, awesome. All right. All right, Councilmember.
Yeah. First, I want to say congrats to the city of Carver for winning the night to night Battle of Cities. I don't even know if it really had a title, but they got a nice big donation in there in the food. I thought that Bonafol Basket put it well, that the real winners were all the families that are being helped because the numbers are crazy. So the night to night, five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven pounds of food and eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents were donated to Bonafol Basket from the four cities. So that's incredible. And will go a long ways to people that need it. So that's incredible. And I'm not salty that we didn't win.
We just, we have, we're going to have a better plan next year. I, I see kind of game that's been put down and that's fine.
Go to Chaska by neighborhood versus the other cities were pooled into one, all neighborhoods?
No, we did, we did all pool into one for Chaska, but then we, then we did break it down for the, for the, not the pizza party, the Jersey Mike's party.
Do we know what neighborhood won from Chaska? Did Edelwood win?
Again, again.
I was going to say, I don't know. I didn't get informed that. I got informed the stats that you had announced.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're good. No, you, I didn't have them written down, so that's great.
But, so yeah, congrats to Carver and, you know, amazing. We love having Bonafol Basket in our community and the fact that they can serve somebody with those donations. And thank you to, it sounds like it was Sarah from the Fire Department and Chan Hassen. I can't remember the gal's name from the Chan Hassen Fire Department that kind of had the idea. So thank you to them for having the idea. Great. And those are the kind of ideas, that's what I like, love about our city staff, where they think of things and they mention things and then we can actually do them. And look at all the good that was done.
Well, I think it's great that all four cities were on board to do it and, and, you know, yeah, and in it.
And it's probably a tradition now, so that'll continue.
Well, let's hope so. And it's actually going to expand because there's some other organizations within our, like, city limits that are, that was a great idea and they want to take part.
And then some events coming up. Coffee with the Cops is this Wednesday at nine AM at Jones Coffee, which I think it's the first one at Jones Coffee. So I think that's pretty exciting. I could be wrong, but I think it is. So you can go have some coffee with the cops down there on Wednesday. That's always a good time. And then Latin Music and Food Fest is coming up September twelfth at Fireman's Park, six to ten. That's always such good food.
Fabulous.
Favorite night of the year to go eat at Fireman's Park, for sure. And then Chaska Cares is September twentieth. So lots to do in September. Really good lineup of music. After our last meeting where Matt mentioned, you know, the Headliner and all the other bands, I went and looked them all up on social media and really good music. So I think they'll, both be great nights.
Is there fireworks with the Latin music?
There is a Latin music.
So that's even better because they're early, because it gets dark early. So it's.
Not the Chaska Cares one.
Yeah, okay.
Fireworks. I didn't realize that. That's awesome. And then the last thing is a pretty big announcement that I've been waiting six and a half years for. The city of Chaska now has a TikTok. And it's amazing. We have a TikTok account. There is a video on it. I was the first comment and the first like. It's really such an honor to get to be a part of this time when this happened in our city, so.
I actually, I never look at TikTok and I actually happened to see that. For some reason, I'm like, I have the feeling like, do we have TikTok?
So how'd you see it if you don't have it?
Well, I have TikTok, but I never look at it.
So we've been around for any amount of time, you know, that's been something I've been chasing after for us. And thank you to Krista and Communications Team that made that happen. So. And then I will be missing the next meeting. That's all I have.
Who's putting the content on the TikTok? I mean, like, is it driven by the city?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm still not downloading that app, but congratulations.
You do a good job. Like, you think, I do not have TikTok either, but the video, I'm thinking it was Touch a Truck. It's like, you can touch it. No horns, right? Trucks, trucks, trucks. I was just like, ah, gosh.
Yeah, yeah. You do see some really interesting ones, even from different cities. You're kind of like, well, that's, it's very interesting. So lots of fun things to be had.
Some of my favorite TikToks and, or reels or whatever, videos on social media are from.
Victoria had one where they were trying to announce something and someone kept putting water over somebody's head.
Savage is always funny. Shock because there are moments, yeah. But don't worry, we're here to the game now. The best things take a little time and.
Yeah, we just.
Now we're here.
Yeah, best players come off the bench to clean up, so. Awesome. All right, great report. All right, Elise, you got anything?
So speaking of our stellar communications staff, in addition to developing TikToks, they are in the final moments of Rolling Out the Chaska Today, which is the new newsletter that will go.
It's the new old newsletter.
Is that with the state? Like, is that at the top of it? Like?
Am I the only one here that remembers when we did Chaska Today? It used to be the insert into the Chaska Herald.
We did discover that you and one other Matt were the only ones here from the.
Yeah, sorry, Matt.
So that used to, like, that was like our city newsletter for years.
I probably couldn't read yet.
Sorry, Matt. That is exciting. That is something that we've been asking for, so it's really fun to see it come to realization. Okay, so it's like its own little mailing?
I bet you somebody when they're games, look, the Chaska Today came back.
That's what our next TikTok video is, you opening up your mailbox and saying, then, you know, the new old, new newsletter.
That's a really good TikTok idea, actually.
Let's just have him like sit there waiting in his mailbox and just gets older.
Or you know what, if you have old ones, you can be like in a scrapbook and be like, I really wish.
I actually have some.
That's great. Well, I'm excited because my mother lives in a different community and I see their newsletter. And so I am great. I'm going to show mine with pride, so.
I got a sneak peek from Krista last week and it looks fantastic.
I'm excited. I'll be.
Professional writers creating these maps.
I'll be taking a trip.
Just fine.
We're just late to this game too, but we're going to be better.
Yeah, well, I'm going to take a trip to the mailbox every single day until it shows up.
Hopefully you do that anyway.
Awesome.
That's all I have.
Oh, well, that's a good report. Nate?
I don't have anything, but I've enjoyed.
Now that you're re-engaged. Moving right along, Mike, got anything?
I do not have anything. In fact, I was also an avid TikTok user, but also deleted the app.
Did you? Okay. I only put it on my phone once, just to watch one of her videos and then I dumped it afterwards.
No, I think there is a plausible chance that China is.
Here we go.
What's your conspiracy theory?
You got your tin hat hanging underneath the desk?
Misrevealed himself as a conspiracy.
That was the best part of this whole.
Was it like council confessionals here or something? I don't know. All right. Mike, that's a great report though. So, yeah, there you go. Matt?
Just a reminder that it is September eighth that we'll meet, not September first.
You're stealing my thunder.
Okay, well, just, we don't want all show up on the wrong day, so. We will have a work session beforehand. We're gonna, you know, we have to set the maximum tax levy in September. And so we already talked about sort of the revenue side. This is going to be focused more on the expenditure side of the general budget.
And that's five forty-five or five thirty? I'm not going to text you next time because I'm going to actually know this.
Uh, I, I think we could probably do five forty-five.
Okay, that sounds good. That sounds exciting.
That's all I have.
It's a very important. All right, well, that's a good report too. Well, I was going to start off with, we don't have a meeting on the first, but no. Yep, we're meeting on the eighth, Labor Day. I hope everyone has a healthy and safe Labor Day. And we talked about back to school. I think we covered that really well, just the change of schedules and just making sure that everyone is bus stop aware. And wishing those kids a really fun and successful school year and teachers as well. A couple of things, just recap Touch a Truck. I don't know if anybody was able to go take a venture around, but I went and took a peek just because it was over in the Chaska Commons this year. And I know that, I think, Park and, first of all, big thank you to Park and Recs. They did a fantastic job organizing the event. They pivoted really well because we normally would have it at the Chaska Community Center parking lot. That road construction kind of said that that was not really feasible. And then there was resurfacing happening in the high school parking lot, which was where it was last year. And so they had to pivot. And then, like you said, Matt, I think last meeting was that you kind of had a conversation with some of the business owners and that they would really love to have some engagement in that area too, which is great. And so I just want to say a really deep appreciation to the planning because I know it's a new space, new logistics, that takes a lot of prep work. And then you have other agencies involved. Like I know I saw, I think Mindot had a plow there and some other, like Southwest Transit had a bus there. So there's some other folks that joined up along with all the other community organizations that had booths there, that did outreach and engagement with people. And then also just thank you to the businesses. I know some of them gave up their parking. And I know like some of the businesses, you know, participated in it, but I also know some of them were a little, like the, just the, the masses were great. But it was also, some people were just going to go to the grocery store and it was like, what's going on? And so, you know, just a little bit of a mix and flow. So it all worked really good. It was really well attended and everyone had a great time. I saw several people come up to city staff and just say that they really enjoyed it being at that venue. I know, I'm sure Mary Monti probably feels a little different directing the traffic as that. But, but it was really great to see that happen and just see it be very well received. So, great job on Touch a Truck. Night to Unite, we kind of recapped that already. So it was really nice to venture out to some of the neighborhood parties and see just folks gathering together and having a good time. The weather was great. So that's always such a, a great event for the year. And then, yeah, great for the food shelf, raising all the funds and the food for the community. We talked about the Chaska Cubs, but I also today was able to go to the ribbon cutting for DBAT. It's one of the businesses that, you know, came through and opened. I think they opened in the spring, but I think they, they were waiting on some of their equipment. And so they did the ribbon cutting today. So it was really fun to be in that space and kind of see that kind of realized. And it's just going to be a great space for youth or adults to be in. I think their concept is really is centered around community and just, you know, being inclusive and creating a space for people to come and learn a new skill, improve a skill. So they just appreciate them investing in the community and just want to wish them the best of luck being up there. So I think it'll be great.
Mayor, if I could add, I thought, I will say it was super cool and nice of them. So when they're in that process of waiting for equipment, because they had some backlog issues in shipping, they really opened the doors to both softball and baseball associations. And there were practices because it rains, shocker.
Every day.
In Minnesota, which was really kind of a good partnership. And I can already see some of that. Obviously, they have a business model that helps support that, right? So there's positives. But it was just nice because, you know, a lot of those early practices, we don't need, groups don't need pitching machines. They just need space to throw ball and everything like that. So they quickly reached out and pivoted. And, you know, the few times I've been in there, it's, it's a busy place. You know, they bring in instructors. I think actually tomorrow they have an instructor that's been, did some work with some really good teams in SEC, which is kind of a baseball parlance conference. So, yeah, just, you know, really good, good partnership. I think they'll be a really strong asset.
Yeah, they talked about just being really embraced and welcomed into the community. And they said that we had a really strong baseball softball community. So they knew that this is where they wanted to make that investment and it's already been, you know, paying off for them. And also, they're just located over by, off of Angler and, oh, I never remember that. Yeah, Clover Shive. It's kind of. Yep, Swaglock, yep. And the Oppiden, well, she probably doesn't want Oppiden, but, yeah, so over in that area. And then one of their machines is kind of. but, yeah, so, over in that area, and then one of their machines is kind of, at least one of them, is kind of like a golf ball simulator, where it's got a screen, and when you hit the ball, it will show you kind of where it would have gone on the diamond or on the field, so it's, it's really neat, yeah, really cool, great space, congrats to them. Also want to just pay mention to our electric director, Pete Weifels, I, his last day is Friday, I'm so sad, but I know that he was making a career pivot that was really gonna be good for him and his family, and so I appreciate all the hard work, Pete, you have done, I know that you helped us roll out the AMI, the meters, and I know that's, it was a huge undertaking and just being a part of the team, and we're gonna miss you tons, but understand and respect those, those goals, so.
Yeah, it is huge, too, with, we've seen so much transition with so many people in our electric department that have retired, that have been there for years and years and years, so he was sort of a, came into the department at a real, you know, pivotal point where he needed to build a new team, and he did a great job with that, so, yeah, I, I agree, he did a great job, he's going down to Marshall where he can be with his grandkids and his daughters, and so, that's why, really wishing the best of luck, I think, this, you know, he said but for this job, being in that town, he would have stayed here, and, yeah, so.
No, he was a class act, I, we will miss him, but yeah, have deep respect and appreciation for him, and what, you know, I get the goals, so. Just, and then one other thing, just before we cut loose, Metro Cities has a couple of, what do you, what do they call it, task force, I don't know what their official
Committees?
Committees? I'm on the transportation one, I know, I think you can maybe sneak on one, so I don't know if, especially, well, I mean, I don't know if you guys have seen the emails, but just they do like one on housing, sometimes it's a really great way of like learning kind of things that are bigger in scope and kind of having an impact, so if you guys have any questions, reach out to city staff, I'm sure they can help answer those questions, and I'm sure it's not too late, because I think that they value the input from our community into the broader legislative priorities that, you know, we have, and that makes a big difference, especially, I think, in regards to housing and some of the legislation that's come forward in the last couple of years, and just some of the proposals that will probably come up this session, I just think that having another representative voice on there could be really helpful, so if anybody can swing the time, it's, and it's on Zoom this year, so there's, there's a few Zoom meetings, it's not, it's not a giant commitment, because there's like two more meetings, so, anyways, so if you want to do it, act fast, but let's put it out there. Okay, with that, that's everything I have, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And second, Councilmember Vanish, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned, thank